All present. Great, so now we'll move on to the administrative report and discussion, Mr. Curtis.
Thank you, Chair Higgs and members of the commission. Chair, welcome back. So, and also welcome to the study session. We've enabled the study session, the 4:30, so thank you for attending. I hope you find it beneficial. In terms of administrative report, the only thing I have for you tonight is just to remind you with acoustics in this room and the speaker system and these encasements, these plastic encasements, just please remember to speak into the microphone. You could just bring it up to your mouth. That would be really helpful for everybody. Because we have a lot of things going on here. We have this room which has some acoustic issues and also making sure that people can hear you in the Zoom feed and the television. So the microphones are certainly helpful. With that, Madam Chair, that's the only thing I had for today's administrative.
Okay. Should we touch on the anticipated hearing dates coming up? Is that something that you would walk through as well?
Certainly, Chair Higgs, the we do not have any items anticipated for September 8th, so that might end up being a cancellation, depending what happens tonight, but that might be a cancellation. So the anticipated items that we have in September won't be till September 22nd. And so we have a couple items anticipated on the consent agenda. The People's Hangar and Helport, which is just another heliport conditional use permit for helicopters. This seems to be the year for the helicopter. We're getting a lot of them. And then the next two items are Pima McDowell. This is a non-major general plan amendment and rezoning at the south west corner of Pima McDowell, the old Bill Hurd site that had been used for some storage of some National Guard vehicles, if you're familiar with that site. They're looking to rezone that from the C4 district to a C3 district to allow more commercial uses on that property. And they're thinking about doing using the existing building for an office use, which currently isn't allowed in the C4 district, which was set up for the Bill Hurd dealership. So that's what we're anticipating on the consent agenda of September 22nd. And then on the regular agenda, we have two mixed-use projects, PUD rezonings. The Miller, which is at just north of here on Miller and Sixth Avenue. And then we have the 92nd Street rezoning, which is in that area just south of Shea and 92nd Street, east of the Honor Health Hospital, which is next to the 9400 Shea PUD rezoning case that the Planning Commission saw a few months back. With that case, because those are, that's the 92nd Street rezoning case is side by side to the 9400 Shea case. Interestingly enough, the City Council continued the 9400 case last night at the request of the applicant team to, I think it was October 19th. And coincidentally enough, if the Planning Commission were to make a recommendation to the City Council on September 22nd, the scheduled hearing, then the 92nd Street rezoning would likely go to council the same night as 9400 Shea. So keep that in mind when reviewing that case and thinking about the benefits, if any, of those two cases going to the City Council at the same time. We can't always control what happens at the council agenda. 9400 project, which is next door, is also out of our control in terms of when it gets on the agenda, but right now, they're both could be targeted for the council in October. So something you might find of interest. That's all we have anticipated in September, Madam Chair.
Okay, very good. Are there any questions or comments for Mr. Curtis regarding those anticipated hearing dates? Commissioner Serena?
I don't have a question on that. It's a general question, so it's relative, it's to the consent item today, but it won't be specific to the to that case number, so you should be able to answer it. Can you have it off the top of your head? I remember in the past when applicants have applied for the dispensaries, we're always told there's a certain number of dispensaries allowed throughout the city and Chaws, that was the name of it. Is there a, is that still in place? And is that, that, does that change at all with some of the rules that have changed at the state level? Because I know there's a dispensary in the airpark currently.
Yeah, Chair Higgs and Commissioner Serena, the Chaws, which were community health areas, I think, is what they were referred to. It's my understanding that those were established to, at the beginning, to spread out the different, at the time, medical marijuana dispensaries throughout the state. And then I think after five years passed, those dispensaries were able to relocate themselves based off of some different criteria. And as a result, we ended up getting, I think, one or two more based off of a criteria, and it's probably serving the public health needs and so forth. So the Chaws are no longer do no longer dictate the availability. So really what dictates the availability is what's in the zoning ordinance in various communities. And our zoning ordinance, as you know, has separation requirements from different protected uses and so forth. So when you apply those different separation requirements to a map, you end up figuring out which properties are eligible. And if you remember, maybe some of you don't, but there was a operator who was interested in doing something in Old Town, actually, near the entertainment district. And so there wasn't, there are too many conflicts in terms of competing uses and the separation requirements. So at one time, that applicant team was proposing to change the zoning code to provide more flexibility. That never reached Planning Commission or council. But it demonstrates that how much that zoning code is dictating the available locations in Scottsdale for these facilities.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Curtis? Regarding, oh yes, Commissioner Gonzalez?
I guess basically what I wanted to do is direct the operating times that the dispensary was going to operate and everything to that, to that degree. Do we know what the other operating times are for other retail operations in that general area?
Chair Higgs and Commissioner Gonzalez, if you're speaking of the airpark area.
Right.
There's a couple other dispensaries in the airpark area, if that's what you're referring to. They've recently submitted and received approval for extensions, because these are five-year use permits. And at the time that they received their extensions, they changed their hours of operation to match what the state allows in terms of hours of operation, if I remember right. And I thought it was 8:00 AM to 7:00 PM, if I remember right. But it seems like they're all have changed their hours of operation to maximize and be consistent with the state allowable operations in terms of hours. In terms of other retail uses, because we don't monitor that, I don't know, but we know that, you know, you know, there's some of the bigger retail outlets out there. There's the Lowe's up there that's open late. There's a, next door to this is a, I think it's Enterprise Rent-A-Car, that probably has rental car hours that probably differ every day, but probably in the later hours. So, but I don't have a total feeling about all the retail in that area.
I guess maybe what I was having questions is, do you know what the other operating hours are for the dispensaries in the, in the airpark already?
Yes, Chair Higgs and Commissioner Gonzalez are the same as what's being proposed with this application. I think it's 8:00 to 7:00. I think that's what the, what's maximum allowed by the state as well as the city.
Okay, that's, that was the, I guess, my aim of the questions was to see if they were still going to contain themselves within that 8:00 to 7:00 PM type of range, or if they, you know, were, you know, so that, you know, to see what their operations were really going to be like. Because I know what, you know, there's contradictory type of information out by the state. State kind of dictates what they're going to do with things, and we have to kind of conform a little bit to what the state allows. And I just didn't want to see something going like, you know, opening up at 8:00 and closing at midnight type of thing. Thank you.
Did you have a response to that? Sorry.
Yeah, Chair Higgs and Commissioner Gonzalez, I might have the hours wrong. I know that the hours have changed and I might be thinking of the past. Brian has the, the hours that, both being proposed and if they're consistent with the ones nearby.
Chair Higgs, members of the commission, this is Brian Clef. The ordinance allows them to operate from the hours of 6:00 AM to 10:00 PM. And that's how we have the report drafted up with, with the stipulations to be from the hours of 6:00 AM to 10:00 PM.
Okay. Unless there's anything else, I want to make sure we have time. If there are any procedural, go ahead, sorry, Commissioner Graham, is there something else?
Only if I'm, I'd speak, you know, if you allow me.
Absolutely. Commissioner Graham?
Thank you, Chair Higgs. Mr. Curtis, I just wanted, when is the, when are we going to receive confirmation that the September 8th meeting is canceled? It says potentially canceled.
So Chair Higgs and Commissioner Graham, the only thing that would keep something on the 8th, because we don't have any, because we've, didn't advertise anything, would be anything that maybe is continued tonight to a date certain on the 8th, even though that's a short turnaround. We usually continue things for a month in advance.
Right.
But we leave it open.
Okay.
But we'll have that confirmed tonight or tomorrow, depending what happens. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Curtis. Thank you, Chair Higgs.
Yes, so now moving on to item number four on the study session. For those that have, that are arriving, we are still in the study session at this point. Any questions or discussions around the procedures or issues of today's agenda items from the commissioners? Nope, it does not look like there are any at this time.
Chair Higgs, just want to bring to your attention additional correspondence.
Okay.
For the Green Belt 88 project. As you know, this is an item that was continued by the Planning Commission before. A lot of correspondence, a lot of interest in the community. We included in your original packet additional correspondence a week ago. And since then, there's been additional correspondence. I think you received all that yesterday. And then in front of you today is additional, more correspondence that we received, both in support and in opposition of that case. Item number three, just wanted to bring that to your attention. Thank you.
Great, thank you. And I just want to confirm that every commissioner does have those most current emails and copies of them in their packet. Yep, it looks like we are good. With that, unless there's anything else, that will conclude our study session. We're adjourned and will return at 5:00 PM, so approximately eight minutes for the regular Planning Commission meeting. Thank you.
Hi, Michelle Green, it's Karen. How are you? You might have to star six to unmute. Michelle, this is Karen. Can you hear me?
Hello?
Hi, Michelle. I can hear you.
Thank you.
You're welcome. I'm going to put you on mute, and then when it's your time, we'll just have you star six to unmute.
Star six to unmute? Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Hi, Michelle Green, it's Karen. How are you? Okay, I think we're ready. Welcome to the Scottsdale Planning Commission Public Hearing. The city encourages your interest and participation in the public hearing process. The Planning Commission is an advisory board to the City Council on land use and zoning matters. The meeting agenda items are development applications that require public hearings. The Planning Commission considers the request and makes a recommendation for approval or denial to the City Council. The City Council makes the final decision for or against approval of the application. The agenda consists of the roll call, minutes approval of the prior meeting. Continuances are for items that will not be heard tonight. Withdrawals are for items that have been withdrawn from any further consideration. Consent agenda is for items not likely to require a presentation or discussion. All items on the consented agenda may be voted on together. Any commissioner may move any item from the consent agenda to the regular agenda. Regular agenda is where each item includes a presentation and recommendation by staff, a presentation by the applicant, and public testimony. The applicant has the opportunity to respond to the, to public testimony. The Planning Commission then discusses the case and votes. Non-action is for items for discussion. No vote will be made by the Planning Commission. I don't believe I have sample cards with me, but the citizens wishing to speak, I think they have found some of the, the cards over here, maybe if you could hold them up. Wishing to speak on any agenda item remotely must have submitted public comments or request to speak form no later than 90 minutes prior to the start of the meeting. Those wishing to speak in person must fill out a blue speaker card. Or if not willing to speak, you may fill out a yellow comment card and turn it in at the staff table before the agenda item is to be discussed. The chair will call you by name when it is your turn to speak. When called, come to the podium if attending in person, or press star six button if calling in. State your name and address and then begin speaking. Groups wishing to speak, groups wishing to speak should elect a spokesperson to represent the views of the group. Your comment will be limited to three minutes for individual speakers. One additional minute for each additional individual present at the meeting who has contributed their time to a representative speaker, up to 10 minutes. Please format your speech to be accommodated within the applicable timeframe given. For convenience and timing, presentations for those attending in person, a light system is installed on the podium. The light will be green for two minutes and yellow for one minute. Please conclude your comments when the red light appears. If speaking remotely, the chair will indicate when your time is up. Those remotely attending this meeting shall observe the same rules of order and decorum as if they were physically in attendance inside City Hall. Thank you for your interest and time, and now we will begin the meeting with the roll call.
Chair Higgs?
Present.
Vice Chair Young?
Here.
Commissioner Scarborough?
Here.
Commissioner Gonzalez?
Present.
Commissioner O'Tel?
Here.
Commissioner Serena?
And Commissioner Graham?
Here.
All present.
Thank you. I don't, do we have the public comment cards ready? It looks like we do have speaker requests to speak in person. For, for agenda item number three. A handful of requests. And then, there are, is there a yellow? There is, okay, and then there's, there's one yellow card for a comment for us to review. I'm sorry, there's two? Oh, one yellow card for agenda item number three that we will all review. Okay. We also have some requests to speak via phone. Let me find this list here. We have four different requests to speak. I assume that is the final total, Mr. Curtis?
That's correct, Chair Higgs, and we also do not have any requests to speak on non-agendized items.
Perfect, so all for item number three. Great, thank you. So we will wait until we get to that item on the agenda for those speakers. Now we will move on to the approval of minutes from last meeting. Is there anyone that would like to make a motion for approval of the meetings from August 11th? We have a motion from Commissioner O'Tel.
Move to approve the minutes.
Great, and we have a motion from Commissioner O'Tel in a second.
Second.
Second from Commissioner Scarborough. We get a roll call vote, please.
Chair Higgs?
Yes.
Vice Chair Young?
Yes.
Commissioner Scarborough?
Yes.
Commissioner Gonzalez?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Tel?
Yes.
Commissioner Serena?
Yes.
Okay.
The blue lights not on.
And then Commissioner Graham? And then Commissioner Graham.
Yes.
Motion passes, thank you.
Great, thank you. We will now move to the action items, beginning with the consent agenda. Before I begin, I do not believe we have any recusals for consent agenda item eight UP 2021, the Kira Leaf Scottsdale, is that correct? Okay. So just as a reminder, that any commissioner can pull a consent agenda and gen item and move it to the regular agenda. Would anyone like to move the consent agenda item to the regular agenda? Nope? Okay, great. So I would like to now ask for a motion for the approval of, like to ask for a motion for consent agenda item eight UP 2021. Commissioner Scarborough.
I may, I'd like to make a motion to move to make a recommendation to City Council for the approval of case eight UP 2021 for the staff recommended stipulations based upon the finding that conditional use permit criteria have been met.
Great, do we have a second? Okay, we have a second by Vice Chair Young. Can we please get a roll call vote?
Chair Higgs.
Yes.
Vice Chair Young.
Yes.
Commissioner Scarborough.
Yes.
Commissioner Gonzalez.
Yes.
Commissioner O'Tel.
Yes.
Commissioner Serena.
No.
And Commissioner Graham.
No.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Moving on to our regular agenda item. Regular agenda item number three is fifteen ZN 2020. I believe we have a staff presentation from Mr. Clough.
Thank you and good evening Chair Higgs and members of the commission. My name is Brian Clough, I'm a planner with the city's current planning department. This is Green Belt eighty-eight, case fifteen ZN twenty twenty. The credit, the request this evening before you as a recommendation to the City Council regarding a zoning change from the PNC Planned Community District to a planned unit development for redevelopment of an existing center into a mixed-use center, including two hundred and seventy-eight multifamily dwelling units and approximately twenty-five thousand square feet of commercial area on a seven acre site. That would be, your recommendation should be based on the planned unit development criteria within the zoning ordinance, and the development plan does include amended development standards. The, this case was previously heard by the Planning Commission back in June, but to reorient you to the site, we're looking at the southwest corner of Hayden and Osborne, highlighted in yellow here. Here's a closer look at the site at that southwest corner, which is currently occupied by a commercial shopping center and three pad buildings. So first getting into a summary of the June ninth Planning Commission meeting. There was quite a bit of discussion at the meeting as well as public comment received. These are some of the key points that were discussed by the commission that resulted in the applicant continuing to work with the neighborhood and making some changes to their application. First off was a lot of discussion regarding height and density and massing. Some of the comments were related to that heightened density not appearing to align with the community, community interests and comments received, and that the applicant maybe should consider reducing the number of units and increasing the amount of commercial floor area that's within the development. Then there was also commented an emphasis on architectural quality of the development, specifically that mechanical equipment should be better integrated along with the, the green belt side, particularly that west elevation, and then building step backs along that green belt and the west elevation could help achieve that. Traffic was brought up as a concern, particularly with the intersection of Hayden and Osborne, and then as well as the southernmost driveway at the south end of the site next to the Starbucks. At the end of that meeting, the Planning Commission did continue the item with direction to work with the community and make changes to the application as needed. So some of the key updates to the application. The applicant did conduct some additional neighborhood outreach, including another neighborhood meeting and coordination with the neighborhood. As a result of the comments from the Planning Commission and additional work with the neighborhood, the number of units was reduced from two hundred and eighty-eight to two hundred and seventy-eight, reduction of ten units bringing it down to just under forty dwelling units an acre. Additionally, the massing adjacent to the wash was adjusted by removing a building cantilever that was on the third and fourth floors of the building that reached out over the walkway there. That was eliminated, and then a step back was added for the fourth floor. Additionally, there were some stipulations added as a result of Planning Commission discussion. One related to building height, specifically to the mechanical equipment. Currently, the PUD allows ten feet additional for mechanical equipment, and in addition to the forty-eight feet for the building, the applicant has agreed to limit that to six, six feet. They've also agreed to comply with the green building program, which with the city of Scottsdale would be the IGCC. And then also some stipulations related to landscaping, which would require larger trees along the west elevation, along the wash, and then larger shrubs over the whole site. To point out some of the changes, these are the south building elevations. So here, this illustrates, this would be the west side of the site adjacent to the wash. On the top is what was presented to the commission back in June. So you can see that cantilever of the second or the third and fourth floors, and then the current proposal, which has eliminated the cantilever, and then steps back the fourth floor, and that's about a twelve foot step back there on the fourth floor. These, these then are the current proposed building elevations for all four sides of the building. And then the proposed site plan, which hasn't changed substantially from the last time you've seen it, with the exception of the cantilevers that used to be in this area and are no longer there. So you can see the main mass here would be the multifamily residential with the commercial retail floor area along the ground floor here. And then also there's a new commercial pad that'll be located here out near Hayden, and then a commercial pad here closer to Osborne. Summary of the public outreach, so leading up to the June Planning Commission meeting, there were the three open houses that you see here in August of twenty twenty, September twenty twenty, and then March of twenty twenty-one. July fifteenth of twenty twenty-one was the additional open house meeting that was conducted after the Planning Commission's last meeting. And then there was also a follow-up meeting on, on July sixteenth with some other interested citizens. In addition to that, the standard city and applicant notifications have been conducted throughout the process as well as our normal web advertising. Over the, over the process, we have received hundreds of public comments, both in favor and opposition to the proposal. And I believe you guys have been, been seeing most of those being filtered through over the last few weeks. So summary of the action requested this evening again is the recommendation to the City Council regarding the rezoning for the planned unit development districts for the mixed-use center in accordance with the planned unit development criteria, including amended standards as well. This was an abbreviated presentation, since you, you did hear the case before, kind of highlighting the differences from last time. So I do have other slides if there's anything else that you'd like more detail on. So at this point, that concludes staff's presentation, and I'd be happy to answer any, any questions.
Okay, it looks like we have a question from Commissioner Gonzalez.
Thank you for your presentation. It seems like it's, okay, so they reduced the residential spaces down about ten apartments, is that basically your understanding? Or did they take, did they actually take any square footage away from anything? Or did they add, they added some things to the corporate side as far as the retail center? But did they take, what did they, where did they take the square footage out from on the living units?
Chair Higgs and Commissioner Gonzalez, the applicant will be able to go into more detail on that, but my understanding is the majority of where that came from would be the western side of the building where the cantilever was reduced and the additional step back was provided.
So that accounts for livable square footage?
That would be where the, the reduction in livable square footage was, but the, the applicant can provide further clarification on that.
Thank you, sir.
Great, are there any other questions? For staff? Great, thank you, Mr. Clough. I believe we now have a presentation from the applicant, is Mr. Pascal? In the room?
Madam Chair, sorry to disappoint you, I'm going, it's Jason Morris with you, Morris, on behalf of the applicant. Actually, Mr. Silver, the owner of the property is here. I'm here speaking on behalf of the development team, although Jeff Brand, the project architect and neighbor is also here, as well as George Pesquale, who actually knows all of the project data and just tells me. So with that, I apologize, I don't have an abbreviated presentation. My, my presentation is likely going to go over some of what we discussed at the last hearing and also has some new information because you've asked us to work with the neighborhood and make some changes. So with that, I'd ask for some amount of flexibility with the time. As we're aware, the, the site itself is at Hayden and Osborne Road, and the site itself sits in a perfect location in terms of access to both arterial roadways, but also because of its lack of proximity to single-family homes. In terms of design and access, it also has tremendous benefits in terms of being able to create a true mixed use at this location. The existing conditions, they're indicative of a nineteen seventies shopping center. It's been maintained tremendously, but it is in fact a nineteen seventies shopping center in an era when we are seeing less and less retail. And certainly, it was built for a grocery-anchored center that will not occur at this space ever based upon the spacing in the existing retail in the area. Importantly, from your perspective as planning commissioners, as we look at the Scottsdale general plan, what is called out is specifically mixed-use neighborhoods. And what we are requesting is to bring a mixed-use project to a mixed-use neighborhood designation within your general plan at an appropriate location along an arterial roadway. The project that is being proposed, as you've seen from a site plan perspective, adds an additional twenty-five thousand square feet of dedicated open space. It has a passeo that goes a thousand feet. I mention this because so often, when we present cases to the city of Scottsdale and to the Planning Commission in particular, there's always the question of what, what's in it, what does the city get out of this? What does the neighborhood get out of this, that we understand what the developer gets? In this instance, we're not working with the developer. We're not working with an apartment builder who is anxious to build in the middle of a escrow that must close and we're moving toward. Instead, we're working with a property owner, and somebody who is looking out for the long-term interest of their property and the neighborhood as a whole to make sure that it does not devolve based upon what we're seeing in the retail sector. As we look at the site, it also includes an opportunity for art, art installations along that passeo. You can see the passeo itself is more than just a sidewalk. It includes gardens, it includes seating, both hard and soft scape, as well as opportunities for art. It really culminates in this public plaza, which in and of itself is a fourteen thousand square foot plaza, usable and open to the public, and in fact, we'll talk later about the fact that we have agreed to create a license to make sure that is always available to the public. And regardless of what happens with the rest of the mixed use, will always be activated space. As you can tell, it's also adjacent to the green belt itself. It's one of the only spaces on the east side of the green belt that are truly public spaces that can be utilized by the public as open space, but also, as you can see here, it's adjacent to two proposed restaurant pads to activate that space. This gives a better sense of how to use that fourteen thousand square feet between event area, event lawn, a game lawn, stage, and dining patios, as well as public art. Since our last Planning Commission hearing, we have had an opportunity to do several things, so that time was not wasted. We've conducted an open house meeting on site. We had a meeting actually with the neighborhood opposition to get a better sense of what their demands were for this site and what their interests are. And I have to say, from their perspective, they have done an excellent job communicating their concerns, and frankly, their dislike of a plan that includes apartments. But they have not been shy about explaining that that is not the vision that they have for this neighborhood. Based upon the general plan, based upon where we are with retail, and based upon the future of this site, we disagree, but that doesn't mean we haven't listened and we haven't incorporated changes as a result of those things. You can see there is a reduction in the size of the fourth floor area. That included a square footage reduction, it wasn't just a shifting of units. There was actually square footage lost as a result of this change. And we've also had an opportunity to talk to potential tenants who are interested in an activated mixed-use area. There's a list of changes and improvements that have occurred. I'm happy to go into any one of them, but time does not allow me to, to touch on every single one of the changes and improvements made. Why are we doing this? What is driving this property owner? It's not a pending deal. It's the reality of what is happening with retail. And as you can see from the headlines, and these are recent headlines, as recent as April sixth of this year, retail is going in the other direction. All that is left are services and restaurants and things that can't be ordered online. As we look at some of these headlines and some of these quotes, the one, the second bullet point points out that a prediction of a twenty percent reduction in total US retail square footage by twenty twenty-five from the current fifty-six feet per capita is estimated. That number is important. And the reason that number is important is because if we look at fifty-six feet per capita, which is still a larger number than many other nations, and then we compare it to Scottsdale's ninety, ninety square feet per resident, we see that there is no shortage of retail in the city of Scottsdale. And even if you compare Scottsdale to all of the other jurisdictions in the metro area, they are still head and shoulders above them with retail. So what do you do with vacant retail? You put tenants in, because if you can't create a mixed use, if you can't redevelop, let's look at what the other opportunities are. This is, this is one potential, you know, this shopping center decided to go with a church. Others have gone with storage. Others have gone with charter schools and professional schools. Those are all options because you can't do those things necessarily online and locally. What we've decided to do is right-size this retail to add twenty-five thousand square feet, which is not an insignificant number. But granted, it's not the majority of the site, and anyone who wants to compare residential square footage to retail square footage is losing the bigger picture. You can't have a disproportionate amount of retail just because you hope that it will be filled. You have to have an amount of retail that's realistic based upon the tenant size and the mix of what you're doing, and that's what we believe we've been able to accomplish with this. And it's possible with the addition of residential uses. As I pointed out, we're looking at smaller retail, retail is getting smaller and more boutique. The other issue that has come up during our conversations with the neighborhood has been height. And we want to make sure, as the Planning Commission, you have the correct perspective as to where we are with height. The existing zoning allows thirty-six feet plus eighteen feet for mechanical. George tells me that's fifty-four, I'm hoping he's right. We are asking for forty-eight feet, which is the roof height. Just to give you a sense of, of roof height, that is a typical four-story building, that's not additional square, that's not additional height, plus ten feet for mechanical, but we are only utilizing six of those feet. And that is only for a limited amount of the building, thirty percent. So we're not talking about large monolithic buildings. More importantly, we are set so far back from Hayden and Osborne that that height is not what you're going to feel as if you're driving by and you're seeing it at the curb. And we can see examples of that. This is perhaps a better illustration of where that height is. You can see the bright yellow is one story at 23 feet. Three-story at 36 feet is the other, the darker yellow color. The blue 48, which is the roof line. The 54 feet is only that area that's screening the roof, which is extraordinarily limited. And the 48 feet is set back, as we pointed out, from both Hayden and Osborne significantly. This is what that looks like in section. And this exhibit at the bottom also illustrates, well, how we're not blocking views. We're not invading privacy. This is where multifamily belongs. It belongs in a place where it can save retail and not impact residents. This is an example of what we're not. I think so much of the concern is having that height at the curb line. What does this look like from the street? What does it feel like? This is not what we're doing. As you can see from these pictures, all of these are virtually at the curb. We are set back hundreds of feet, so you don't have that impact. And you don't have the height of those either. Traffic has been a consideration that's been raised. I will, because of the limitation of time and out of respect for your time, and obviously, I want to address some of the comments from the neighborhood after we've had an opportunity to, for them to speak, I will simply say, we are less traffic. I can quantify it. I can show you where. I can show you how. But we are less traffic than the existing zoning permits. Now, is there less traffic on the site there today? Yes. The reason for that is because there are no customers at the retail site today. So it's very easy to say, doesn't seem to generate much traffic. But we are less traffic at build-out than what is permitted by the existing zoning. Also, as you look at this site, planning commissioners, one of the first things that occurred to me as we looked at this from a land use perspective is I haven't seen a multifamily mixed-use with this much access to two roadways in any of the cases that I've brought before you. There is no shortage of access, good access and safe access. But beyond that, we're creating additional deceleration lanes. We're working to change the light. We're actually adding a controlled left-turn signal at the intersection. There is less traffic at this intersection than there has been historically because of the presence of the 101. So we already know that in the peak numbers that you can see in 1998, there was more traffic than there is there today. So traffic is not a concern. Why are we doing this? Because people are moving to Scottsdale for the jobs that Scottsdale has created. Scottsdale spends an inordinate amount of effort bringing employers to Scottsdale. Part of that employment relies on housing. So you simply can't say, well, we just don't need it. It is needed. It's needed. It's a complement to the employment that you've been so successful in bringing. And it benefits the retail that's dying. Lastly, in terms of how we calculate that density, because there have been questions about, well, you know, perhaps 30 is the right number, or maybe it's, it's somewhere in the middle between 30 and 40. It all depends upon how you calculate it. We have seven acres. We don't own the entire 10-acre site. We've been very clear about that. But we've never tried to take credit for that 10-acre site. What I will say is it's 39 dwelling units per acre on our seven acres. But there is not a member of the public who will be able to discern where our property line begins and where these other commercial pads end. So in fact, it feels like a 10-acre center with a multifamily component at 27 units to the acre. But even if you just give the development team the benefit of the right-of-way, it still would drop the density to 34 units per acre. That's just food for thought. You've been very kind in giving me some additional time. I hope I've covered some of the things that have caused questions or concerns. And I have to say, this is a site that needs help. This is a site where the property owner is coming to you as the planning commission and asking you to help save a site. And he's doing it with realism, not pie in the sky, not an attempt to flip out of this. We've limited the amount of time that the zoning is good for. We've agreed to development agreement terms to protect the neighborhood from their concerns about short-term rentals and other things. But ultimately, this is about what's best for this site and what's considerate to a neighborhood, the entire neighborhood and the entire city, not just those who are opposed. Thank you for your time, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Morris. Before we move on to public comments, and I'm going to go in the order. When we do do that, I'm going to go in the order of those that are present and then those that are, that are on the phone. Before I move on to that, do we have any questions or comments from the commissioners? Yes, Commissioner Scarborough.
Thank you, Chair Higgs. Mr. Morris, thank you for the presentation. You've really spelled out a few things that added clarity for me. But what I'd like to do is if you could go to that height exhibit that you had in your presentation. I think you just went too fast. I couldn't see it. But what is the height of the garage? Will it be the structured parking, the garage itself? What's the height of that?
Because we know where, sorry, Madam Chair, Mr. Scarborough, in this instance, I know that we are screening it fully and that our building heights that are shown in blue are the 48 feet. So I would assume we are at or below the 48 feet. There may be protrusions. I'll look to Mr. Brand, who may be able to give me a more specific number. Come join me in the hot seat.
Sure. Thank you, Chair Higgs. Planning Commission, the height of the garage will be below the 48 feet. So the garage really has to have access to the last floor served. So the last floor served is at 36 feet. There could be, based on IGCC requirements, there'll be a requirement for onsite-generated electrical energy through solar panels. And probably the best place to put those is on the roof of a garage. So there could be some sustainability elements that are on top of the garage that provide kind of a dual effect of shaded parking on the top level as well as, as the 10% of used energy or whatever the number is that IGCC will require. However, the garage itself is below the height of the, height of the apartment building.
So, Mr. Brand, with the potential of solar here over the structured parking, you would surmise that it'd be in the 48-foot possible range, and it would be a completely wrapped project so that the garage should not be visible to the public?
That's, that's correct.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Morris, I heard you did, I did hear you say that there's a development agreement with additional terms beyond some stipulations that are in our packet. I did hear, I think you said, no short-term rentals for this. And also, we just want to confirm that the units that you're proposing, are they market rate attainable, affordable?
Madam Chair, Mr. Scarborough, they are market rate. And in fact, the development agreement will include language prohibiting the short-term rentals.
Thank you, sir. That's all I have, Chair.
Thank you.
Thank you. Additional questions from commissioners? It looks like we do have one from, or at least one from Commissioner Ortell.
I thought I understood when I looked at this slide. Says screening equals 54 feet. The garage is screened. Am I correct in then guessing that the screening extends 54 feet, but the building itself is 48?
Madam Chair, Mr. Churchill, yes, in fact, that is correct. The screening is essentially parapet walls to screen mechanical equipment, so it's very limited.
Thank you.
Thank you. It looks like we now have a question from Commissioner Serena.
Yeah, so I mean, I know we're comparing the 54 feet to the existing 54 feet. But that's a significant difference in the use, correct? I mean, you're using 33% more space at the 48, correct? Because you're only allowed 36 feet on the current zoning, 18 feet of the mechanicals. So I'm assuming that whatever the current zoning would allow for, that 18 feet of screening would also represent approximately the same square footage on top of the building as the rendering that you have, correct? Kind of more to the center. It's not, so I guess what I'm trying to say, it's not 18 feet all the way to the edge on the current zoning. It would be for the screening and mechanicals, which would also be condensed into the middle, which would have a lower impact on, I think, the pedestrian experience is the wood we've.
Madam Chair, Commissioner Serena, to the question portion of that, I think you could do it as 18 feet regardless. You could, 54 feet is 54 feet. So you could screen all the way around the perimeter of the building, which would leave a 54-foot footprint if you desired. More likely, you would screen only the elements that need screening, but some of those things are significant, whether they're water towers or elevator overruns. There are things that would bring it up to 54 feet. Because we're talking about a hypothetical building, I couldn't tell you what the percentage would be. I just know that they're both 40, 54 feet.
Okay. Maybe a question for staff. And have we ever had a building in the city that's had screening around the entire edge of the building, except for maybe, I think, the Dial Building at the 101?
Chair Higgs, Commissioner Serena, and planning commissioners. To clarify a little bit about mechanical screening requirements and allowances in other districts, most of our commercial districts other than the PUD, there is not a set cap on how high you can go for that mechanical screening. They're mentioning 18 feet. That's possible. But that 18 foot's not a specific number that's in the zoning ordinance. And the area of the building that's used for mechanical screening above the maximum building height is limited to 50% of the roof area. So it could not extend for the full area of the roof. It's limited to that 50%. So in some cases where they're not going beyond the building height, potentially mechanical screening could cover the building. But if they're extending beyond the maximum building height, they're limited to that 50%.
So under the current zoning, we'd be looking at a 36-foot building and 50% at most of the building height to have the 18 approximate screening height. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay.
Madam Chair, so if I'm understanding that, it could actually be more than 18 if necessary. Because 18 is just sort of a number, but it's not written in the code. Could be taller than 18.
Chair Higgs and commissioners, to clarify, the section that addresses that states a number of 100 feet. So that's kind of how much you have to play there based on how tall your building actually is.
Just from my knowledge, what kind of use of commercial would require a 50% of the building height in screening for mechanicals? Like what, what kind of industrial use would require up to 100 feet of screening? Or let's just use the 18 and 36.
Chair Higgs, Commissioner Serena, the 50% is 50% of the area that they're limited to.
No, I'm sorry, 18 of 36. So 50% of the building height is the 18 of 36. So if we put an 18-foot-high screening, I'm just trying to figure out the use. If we're talking about the uses, or the screening can go as high as 100 feet. I mean, what kind, I'm just trying to understand what kind of use would require that kind of screening.
Yeah, that's a good question, and I'm not an expert on mechanical equipment. But I don't know that, that I've seen anyone need to use that much, except on larger buildings that might have chillers or something like that on the roof.
Okay, so a large, go ahead.
Like, for a lot of the newer mechanical and cooling equipment, there's cooling towers. I think Scottsdale Quarter has got one, and it's about 18 feet with the reverberation mitigation stuff. So the curbing plus the equipment, that's why the 18 feet is there in case there's a cooling tower. If there was an office product built there that was three stories, they would likely have a cooling tower on the roof. Again, and that usually is somewhere between 16 to 20 feet, so that's why 18 is represented there.
And you're talking about, is it the section of Quarter that you're, that Helson did, correct?
Yes, we did the first two buildings on Scottsdale Road that were 60 feet. And then there's an 18-foot metal screening that you'll see above that. That's, that's on the building. It's offset maybe a couple of feet from the parapet.
So on the 60-foot commercial building that you did, it required an 18-foot screening of mechanicals. So on a 36-foot building, if you were to do this commercial, it probably wouldn't require 18 feet.
No, the equipment is fairly standard.
Standard, so it'd be 18. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. I think Commissioner Gonzalez was hoping to speak next.
Well, I guess maybe what my question is then for the architect. If, are you going to have individual meters on each unit, or is it going to be centralized there?
We're not. I don't believe we're far enough in the plan that we figured out the logistics of.
So you don't need, you don't know if you need a cooling tower or not there?
Oh, there will not be a cooling tower on this project, no. There's no, there'd be absolutely no height unless it was ground-mounted. Yeah, that, that wouldn't happen. Usually, it's going to be some sort of just rooftop, rooftop units. That's why the six-feet reduction is to six feet because likely that, that equipment doesn't usually require more than six feet of screening for smaller rooftop units.
Okay. Thank you. And then my question is, is because, you know, basically, on your presentation, it, it almost made retail space almost sound dire in this, in the city. I mean, it doesn't even sound like you really would want it. I really kind of questioned if you got the right zoning request in here. Maybe you just want to go total, total residence and just forget about retail.
I can address that as well. Madam Chair, Commissioner, based upon what we've seen nationally, but also locally, having a mix of residential that can then support retail onsite. And when I say retail, retail itself has changed. Instead of going to a store and buying a hard good, it's much more likely that our retail will be very service and restaurant-heavy. And to the extent that goods are sold, they are specialty goods. I can point you to the tenants that have walked into and been successful in their locations in, in new mixed-use projects, and they almost entirely fit within that category. But it's very rare to get a large manufactured good retailer, which is why the stores themselves are much smaller. So the storefronts are smaller. It's much more boutique in nature. And as a result of that, the percentage from residential to retail is skewed. So hopefully, that addresses it.
In other words, then, I guess, you have a conditional agreement with Starbucks that's on your property or on their own property, but part of this project in the area. Do you have an agreement with Starbucks that no, no other vendor can have any kind of coffee type of, type of market or anything in the, in your retail space?
Madam Chair, Commissioner, no, I don't believe there's a prohibition because of the separate ownership. If it was one shopping center, that's very likely. But because there's separate ownership, it's very possible that there could be another local coffee purveyor.
The reason why I was asking that is because it seems like almost a lot of these mixed-use projects are coming up. A lot of them include a coffee shop with some sort of breakfast-type of thing. And I just wanted to make sure that there was no underlying conditions for somebody not being able to put something in there, since Starbucks is, you know, garners a lot of potential ability to enclose their own development.
Absolutely. And Madam Chair, Commissioner, what we found is that they have their clientele and local, smaller coffee shops and cafes have theirs. And they're usually different, and they are much less likely to need a drive-through. It's more of a destination.
Okay. And then one of the other questions I have maybe for the architect is, obviously, when they reduced some of the, the square footage for the livable space, was that the overhangs that they're referring to, that they eliminated that open space cantilever?
Yes, primarily, the square foot reduction came in the elimination of the overhang and then the additional offset of the fourth floor along the Green Belt. And there's an offset of the fourth floor facing Osborne as well. So.
Okay, so is that, that is, is that facing westward?
Yes, it's facing westward. Yes.
Then the other, the other thing I would ask then is, has anybody done an elevation survey from the, from the Green Belt side?
I'm sorry.
The elevation?
Chair Higgs and Commissioner Gonzalez, yes, the elevation from the Green Belt side was part of the, part of the revised supplemental that was presented by staff.
Do you remember what that distance difference sort of is between the elevation of the building and the bottom of the Green Belt?
The, oh, from the base of the Green Belt? How much drop there is from this pad down to the bottom of the Green Belt? I do not know the approximate drop. I think it's a, I don't want to guess. I don't know that figure. I'd have to look at a topographical survey.
I guess the reasoning I'm asked this question is because that's going to be your focal point of where you're going to see the, the building, whether it be 100 feet or 200 feet or 50 feet. It's going to be a little bit more than what you would see from the elevation side of the street side of Hayden, correct?
Well, yeah, according to a. Well, yeah, according to a great change, uh, yes, if your eye level is below, you're standing below, but the, the building height and the way that the, the height is measured, um, remains the same. So the building height would be the same, but.
Okay.
Are, are you asking if the perspective of height is different?
Yes, sir.
I would say from an architectural standpoint, if you are looking at something laying down on the ground or your eye level is below something.
You just don't know the actual, actual number.
I don't know the actual dip. I mean, it is floodway. So there's no way to depress this site into a floodway. So.
Thank you.
Thank you. I know we have a, a question or comment from Vice Chair Young.
Thank you, Chair Higgs. Uh, thank you, Mr. Morris, for your presentation. There was one slide that you kind of went through really quick because you said you didn't have enough time. Uh, and I think that that slide had a laundry list of items that were, I believe, discussion points that were had with the neighbors, with the city, that have evolved into stipulations or into the development agreement. So if that serves me right.
Madam Chair, Commissioner, yes, that, that is correct. It, it was the larger list and I was trying to be respectful of your time. I'm happy to bring it up if you'd like to peruse it.
I would. And, and there's a second part to, to my question. I'll ask both questions and I'll let you answer. There was also some discussion. I, I got some emails from some of the neighbors about the request for a condo plat on this. And I also received some correspondence that that was also discussed and considered by the development team. If you could also speak to the pluses and minus of that and how that would affect this project, um, you know, ultimately in its development.
Thank you. Uh, Madam Chair, Commissioner Young, yes, I, I'm going to try and talk and do that at the same time, which is a challenge for somebody as limited as I am, but, uh, the condo plat is going to be part of this list and the reason for the condo plat was because of the benefit to. That's odd. Okay, it's going the wrong way. That probably has. The condo plat itself allows for essentially better quality. It, it's more costly to do that as part of the process, but there was also a concern from the neighborhood that this, that the level of quality wouldn't be such that it could be converted to condos. Um, and it, that's twofold. It's not just the quality aspect, but it's also a desire, at least from some of the neighbors, to see an ownership project versus a rental project. Although, a, as you're aware, there's no guarantee that condos aren't rented. So the hope would be that as an ownership project, this may provide another ownership opportunity for folks who don't want to have a home, but want to live in this part of Scottsdale and want a different type of housing opportunity. So we've agreed to do that as part of this, uh, a part of our development plan.
So with a condo plat where it's an owned, um, unit, does that open it up to say a V R B O or something like that?
You're very astute, Commissioner Young. Yes, that's one of the things that can be guaranteed in an apartment setup that there is a little bit more doubt in a condominium setup. Fortunately, there's the ability to deed restrict and assure that there are no short-term rentals. Where you have ownership, you can still ensure that there's a minimum timeframe for rentals. So it's nothing less, typically it's thirty days so that you don't have those overnight or over weekend rentals, even with an ownership project.
And, and is that sort of a deed restriction going to be included with this project?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
If I could.
Oh, yes.
Chair and members of the commission, the, there's a state statute that prohibits the city from prohibiting short-term rentals. So when this issue is coming, has come up, there is a way where a property owner can deed restrict or put in provisions in the tenant's licenses that prohibit them from short-term renting their units out. The city can't make or require that in either, uh, or, or even approach them and say, you, you, you have to, you, you can't have short-term rentals in this, in this particular unit. And the city has not done that in this particular case, but they have voluntarily uh, agreed to some sort of restriction, either in a, uh, agreement, either, and we're still working through that in the leases of the tenants or in a restrictive covenant. I just want to make sure that we understand that the requirement for prohibiting short-term rentals is not something that the city is imposing on them.
Okay, so this is a self-imposed restriction.
It, it can only be a self-imposed restriction. State statute prohibits the city from prohibiting short-term rentals.
Okay, great. Thank you for that explanation.
Thank you, Mr. Pedia. I apologize. I didn't see you hiding over there. It's hard to see with the reflection. Additional comments or questions from Commissioner Serena?
Yeah, maybe to, um, Mr. Padilla. So my understanding right then, so on the short-term rental, they could obviously state that and put it in the, the language and deed restrict. But the city has no ability to actually execute on holding them to account on that, correct?
They would deed restrict their property. They would have some mechanism in the deed restriction to allow someone to enforce that. That's, that would not be the city. The city was, is not requiring that. That's a voluntary act on their part.
And we have no, um, we currently have nothing in the city that is monitoring or, or trying to tackle this because we can't, correct?
Correct. There are some regulations that do allow the city to, uh, like, for example, have them register, identify things like that. But the prohibition, just simply passing a notice that says you cannot have short-term rentals in Scottsdale. That's not allowed.
Okay, so it'd be self-regulatory on behalf of whoever owns the apartment at the time?
It would be.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. Madam Chair, Commissioner Serena, I, I think what Mr. Pidi is referring to is who the C C N Rs run to the benefit of. So to ensure that that can't be changed just willy-nilly, the benefit of having that short-term rental restriction will be run to an entity that doesn't allow it to change overnight. It's one of the things that we've committed to and gone on record as agreeing to voluntarily.
Thank you. A question or comment from Commissioner Ortell?
If, if I'm reading between the lines here on, on Commissioner Serena, I think, uh, Serena, I, he's probably too nice to ask it this way, but is there, is it possible that the city council could give you the change in zoning? And making the assumption that you were going to put the deed restrictions in and then, you know, after that happened, that you would reneg on that is, and if I understand correctly, Mr. Padilla is saying that city can't regulate this. So is it possible that, I'm not suggesting that you would, and I don't think, you know, the commissioner is suggesting that, but it's just a question, you know, could you do that?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Ortell, it's an excellent question and I, I don't take it personally. The answer to the question is yes, of course, you could always try and do a bait and switch. I think the city, with the city attorney's help, Mr. Padilla's help, has worked this issue through on at least in one other case that I'm familiar with, to try and create a, a belt and suspenders approach to ensure that this doesn't happen. And to the extent that Mr. Padilla's comment was directed to our commitment, or I, more specifically, your recommendation of zoning cannot be explicitly countered upon our agreement not to have short-term rentals. It cannot be extracted from us by the city because there's a state statute that is directly on point and would not allow that. However, we can voluntarily agree to have no short-term rentals. And we can have an agreement with the city where it's an arms-length transaction, where we are voluntarily agreeing to do that. But it cannot be something that we are forced to do. Hopefully that. So the, the belt and suspenders is it can be part of an agreement with the city, but it has to be a voluntary agreement. We anticipate that it will be part of that agreement with the city when this ultimately goes to council.
Then it's a question for Mr. Padilla. If that agreement is made, um, zoning, a zoning change is approved. And then the agreement is rescinded, is the, the, the agreement is violated. There's nothing the city can do at that time. Is that correct?
There could be some, uh, legal action that is, uh, that is involved. If there is a voluntary agreement that the city has put into writing that may or may not be enforceable, you just can't predict how courts will handle that. So that the answer is it's unclear. We have not litigated that issue. We are not aware of any case law on that. So it's difficult to answer your question.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. A, a question from Commissioner Graham.
Thank you, Chair Higgs. Question for the architect, Mr. Brand. The, just to go back to the parking structure, is it, is there any architectural structure that could, that is going to be on top of the parking structure that would raise the height of the, of the surrounding building? Because there was a lot of back and forth and a lot of kind of jargon about that, but it didn't, it didn't seem to come clear to me.
No, 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 our, no feature of the building, there's a hard cap at fifty-four feet. So no feature of the building, according to the stipulations that are proposed here, would be permitted to go anywhere above the fifty-four feet.
At any point even beyond that with architectural structure, appurtenances?
That's correct.
Appliances, hardware?
Hard cap at fifty-four feet.
Thank you for that. And I'm looking forward to public comments. Chair Higgs.
Great. Before we move on to public comments, are there any other questions or, or comments from the commissioners at this time? No. Okay, great. Um, thank you both for your presentations, Mr. Morris and Mr. Brand. And I'm sure we'll be hearing from you again, um, in response to public comments. So moving on to public comment, we're going to begin with those that are in person in the room. Um, I do have a, a procedural question for, um, for staff, for Mr. Mr. Curtis. So I know that we have, um, a few speakers that have chosen to donate their time to one individual speaker. My understanding, and then as we read it off, as I read it off at the beginning of the meeting, is that we will have three minutes for that speaker and one additional minute for the extra, um, each extra person that has dedicated their time. Is that accurate?
Chair Higgs, that's traditionally what occurs and you may want to begin with the, the speakers that are, uh, on the phone. Because I think that there's some donating, uh, their time here to a speaker on the phone. So how you see that? Thank you.
Chair?
Yes.
There, the rule indicates that there is a limit on that. However, if people do donate their time, they get additional time up to ten minutes.
But it's, it's still a one, one minute for each additional person up to ten minutes, correct?
Right.
Okay, thank you. So, um, so Mr. Curtis, uh, we do have three people that have donated their time to someone that is on the phone. So you're, you're recommending we begin with them?
Yes, Madam Chair.
Okay, so we will begin with, um, we, uh, this will be, the speaker is, um, Jan Vucic. I know I've, I've mangled that last name once before. I apologize. Do we have Ms. Vucic on the phone?
Hi, I'm here.
Hi, Ms. Vucic. If you could.
Can you hear me?
I sure can. Um, if, oh, uh, yes, yes, I sure can hear you. Um, so if you could, um, please state your name, um, uh, and address. And we have three people that have dedicated their time to you speaking. So I guess that would be a total of six minutes approximately for you to speak.
Perfect. Thank you. Uh, thank you. So Chair Higgs and Commissioners, um, I, my name is Jan Visic. I live here in Scottsdale, eighty-seven forty-nine East Cherry Lynn Road. It's about two miles away from Hayden and Osborne. And I am here representing the safeguard Scottsdale Group and six hundred and thirty members who have signed our petition and an additional three hundred and nineteen comments, which I submitted to you. We had over five hundred signatures at that time. When we started this journey, we really wanted to work with the Green Belt eighty-eight team to get a community public benefit. And after that seven fifteen and seven sixteen meeting, we have decided to take a position stance, which honestly, it just broke my heart to do that because we as a community are really engaged, really involved and very passionate about this site. So I really was concerned about coming to the zoning commission and thinking about what this would be like. So I, I took it upon myself to kind of look up what zoning is and, and what the roles are here and what we're really asking you to do. So I looked it up and I, I realized what zoning is. It's a rule and a tool that helps cities govern land use for designated areas. And zoning helps to keep areas regulated and it's really a key for us in maintaining land use. Currently in the United States, there is a lack of affordable housing. And one way that cities are really trying to deal with this is to use zoning. The belief is that we can zone for multi-housing, can reduce the housing shortage. However, zoning determines really what you can build on that land and the land use. So as some cities grow and expand like Scottsdale, it's really becomes difficult to manage the zoning. When there's a request for a change in zoning or an upzoning, you're changing that initial intent of the land and its use. And in the areas that are in high demand like Scottsdale, it seems single-family zoning restricts supply, which shrives the land value and reduces housing supply. The challenge here then is that non-residential or commercial buildings are sitting on very valuable land. So step in this circular upzoning as we are doing with this Green Belt eighty-eight. This upzoning increases the building capacity of the land and it creates the opportunity to increase the supply. The true value though of the upzoning is in cities like Scottsdale where the land value is very high. And adding as many units as possible on that land will generate greater revenue for whoever owns the land. The thing about the upzoning is it doesn't reduce the affordability of the housing in the market. But what it does is it increases housing in the affected area. Zoning is not the same thing as comprehensive planning. And if upzoning is approved in an already built environment, then the height and the density puts additional stress on the infrastructure and the surrounding homeowners. So the question truly is, how can we build something that extracts as much as it can from the most individuals to enrich a few individuals? And when you ask yourself that question, then the issue of having rent as a primary driver of income for the building at Green Belt eighty-eight, that is the real reason we're here. It's not for community benefits. The owner of the Green Belt eighty-eight and the lawyers are saying, let's increase the income as much as we can by adding in the most units possible on this property, the double density or the thirty-nine units that they've reduced it to. But it's still higher than our twenty to twenty-four units in the area. By doing this, they have just now made rent a commodity out of a family essential need. And when the owner needs to find, basically what they need to find is other ways to make money, then on items people need to survive and they need to stop compromising the integrity of our family, surrounding community. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Vucic. I think we'll, um, safe to move back to those that are speaking in the Kiva. Mr. Curtis?
Certainly, Madam Chair.
Okay, great. So we have also, it looks like, um, a, a speaker that has donated their time to someone that is here. Um, and that person is Anthony Levy. Is Anthony Levy present? Hello, Mr. Levy. Um, please state your name and, and address and you have approximately four minutes to speak.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair and Commissioners. My name is Anthony Levy. I live at eighty-seven fifty East Monterey Way, eight five two five one. In two thousand and eighteen, the city of Scottsdale completed a traffic report. This was the most recent report done for the city. Uh, we've, I would like to give you some of the information we found in this report for the Hayden and Osborne intersect area. Two thousand and eighteen, the report showed. 2018, the report showed that 32, 39,300 vehicles used the Hayden Osborne section, intersection daily, resulting in 21 collisions, giving it a rate of 0.73 collisions per million vehicles. This ranks this intersection as 60th worst in the city. The city's average is 0.58. To compare, to compare to other intersections, we use Osborne, Scottsdale and Osborne intersection. There have been two new complexes similar to the GB 88 density that have been built since 2018. But in 2018, 33,700 vehicles used that intersection with 27 collisions, resulting in a rate of 1.10, which makes it this intersection to 24th worst intersection in the city. By the way, there are 202 intersections. There also was a collision rate and volume. This is a segment, segment area study in 2018. It had an average of 1.53 collision rates per million miles traveled. The Hayden, Hayden, with Hayden as the primary, from Thomas to Osborne, we had 32,000 cars using it daily, experiencing 42 collisions. This gives, this shows a rate of 3.58 collisions per, versus the city average of 1.53. This ranks Hayden 15th worst in the city. Again, as comparison, using Scottsdale Road from Thomas to Osborne, with Scottsdale as a primary, Oz, from Osborne, from Thomas to Osborne, we had 30,300 cars daily and was resulting in 62 collisions for 5.61 collision rate, which makes it the fifth worst in the city. GB 88 shows that they have five entrances, entrance and exits, three facing on Hayden and two on Osborne. One of the Hayden entrances is, will be used for the driveway to the parking section. The problem with this is the entrance is also the exit for a very busy Starbucks drive-through window. Anybody see a problem with that? In order to make a left turn into the GB 88 off of Hayden, persons will have to use the suicide lane on Hayden to make a left turn off a roadway that is already using 32,000 vehicles daily. Osborne is not any better. One entrance next to Arizona Federal Credit Union is a right turn only because of the traffic island. The other entrance further to the west can be accessed from the north, but again, you have to use the suicide lane. This has given me a deeper understanding of what suicide lane means. Green Belt 88 will add 400 to 500 vehicles a day to the 60th worst intersection in the city and the 15th worst roadway in the city. On page 180 of today's agenda, the city's traffic engineering staff also has issues with this project. The developer has either ignored or has said they will investigate our city's concerns. For the staff, we need to, we need to add two right turn deceleration lanes as required by the city's own DSPM. That's a design standards and policy manual. They want to see, they also want to see a part, a pork chop island, and I had to look up what that meant, folks. Pork chop island placed at the Starbucks entrance to discourage residents from exiting the driveway. Forcing them to use one of the other three exits would make them be able to make a left-hand turn.
Mr. Levy, if you could wrap this up.
Turnoff capture and the city data only says that they could use a 1% and developer should be using less than 10% for their multi-module example. Thank you very much, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Okay, so next we have for a request to speak, another speaker has donated their time to Ms. Paula Sturgeon. And Ms. Sturgeon, one person had donated their time, so you have approximately four minutes to speak. Please state your name and address.
Madam Chairman, I'm Paula Sturgeon. I live at 7904 East Vista Drive here in Scottsdale. And I am proud to say that I have lived in Scottsdale for 58-plus years. This is a town I grew up in and I watched change. We were once really, truly a sleepy little farming community, a little cow town on the edge of Phoenix. And many of us, I've walked over an irrigation ditch on a footbridge to get to Pima School because the street wasn't cut through all the way. There were so many differences back then. We thought we were going to lose our minds when they decided to enclose Scottsdale Fashion Square. Oh my God, we're becoming like a big city. We cannot have this. And then the worst thing of all, they put a multi-story building over there. And yet through every change and every moment of evolution, we not only survived, we thrived. I remember sitting next to Larry Schrader in high school and him saying, my dad's never going to sell our farm. And the week before we graduated, he certainly did because he got a price that he could not say no to any longer. Because Schrader sold his farm, we have that beautiful green belt. See, things change and they change for a reason. But the one thing that never changed about Scottsdale was our sense of being neighbors. And I'm sad to sit here today and say to you, that is changing and I'm really unhappy about it. We now have neighbor versus neighbor. I love this project because I remember what it was once upon a time. I want to see that center back to being something. I am so excited to have the creative power that is behind this project, bring something to my neighborhood. I'm sick and tired of South Scottsdale being used car lots and bars. I wanted to say something else, but I didn't. I restrained for once in my silly life. I want to see something new, but you know what? When I talk to my neighbors about this and they say, you know what? I didn't hear it was going to be that way. And when I tell them what I know about the project and say, why don't you come down and talk at the planning commission? And they say, are you kidding me? And take the blowback from my neighbors? One person said to me, I live on a street where every single person is against this project. I cannot speak out. This is not the Scottsdale I have loved for nearly 60 years. This is not the Scottsdale that grew to be something as powerful and beautiful as it is now. We have to make this stop. You as planning commissioners have a legally defined duty. Yours is not to gauge the public support for it. That is a council duty. Yours is to make sure they've complied with all the rules and regulations. Have they had the proper amount of public input? Yes, that's yours. But not to decide whether the neighbors think it's good or not. There are neighbors here today who will tell you they think it's good. And there are neighbors here today that will tell you they think it's not. But ultimately, please decide based on the existing law and help us bring this state of being at each other's throats to a close. For the love of God and for all that made this city beautiful, please, please, please. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Sturgeon. Next, for request to speak in the room, we have Ms. Dana Close. Ms. Close, as a reminder, if you could please state your name and your address and you have three minutes to speak.
Thank you very much. Dana Close, 1838 North 78th Street, Scottsdale 85257, just down the street from this project. I'd like to just start by saying, I'm not either here in total opposition to apartments, nor am I super pro apartments. I have tried to take things as a case-by-case basis. And honestly, if I could wave a magic wand and turn many of the apartment projects into for-ownership condo, townhome and single-family homes, I would. But in this particular case, in this particular spot, I believe that this is a good project. From what I've been able to glean from the conversations that I've been following online and in other community meetings, what people primarily have against this project is that it's apartments. To my understanding, we don't have a moratorium on building apartments. We may think we have too many, but there isn't a law against it. And if they're, we're going to put in moratorium on things in South Scottsdale that could be diminishing our property values, I would pick a few other items to put on that list if I had the opportunity to do that. A lot of people are also disappointed in apartments because of just the fact that they're apartments and we're weary of them. And they have every right to be disappointed and discouraged by what we've been seeing because a lot of what we've gotten is not good. But I don't believe that that's the case with this particular project. And I am here to encourage you to please look at the merits of this particular project and how many concessions have been made and how much has been done for this project. Let me see. I believe that in this particular project, the design is good. I am glad that it is a green design. The attention to the landscaping, which has been a big, important piece of our development that I've been very concerned about, is excellent. The trees are bigger than they have to be. The parking lot is shady, which we definitely need and we're not seeing nearly enough of that. The setback is great. The patio now on the green belt side where we could go to wait to go into a restaurant is much better in the future, considering what we have now. Right now, I ride my bicycle from my house and when we had the side door, which I miss very much, I would ride my bike through there behind the stinky trash cans and up through the back of it and sit out on a little sidewalk to enjoy ice cream or a cheeseburger at the side door. The patio that's going to be there, the trees, the twinkly lights and waiting on a beautiful pad is something I would welcome. I also welcome the bike path that's behind there as well, as well as the public art. All of those things are great assets to our city and they're a great asset to South Scottsdale. Oh, I'm out of time. It's a good project. I hope that you'll consider it on its merits and all that it's bringing to the area. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Close. Next for request to speak in person is Mr. Raul Zubia. Mr. Zubia, just as a reminder, you have three minutes to speak and please first state your name and address.
Good evening. Thank you for allowing me to speak. My name is Raul Zubia, reside at 7307 East Villaway. And I am speaking here on behalf of support for the Green Belt 88 project. Like many, I have watched this project evolve from something that was quite frankly unappealing into something that I think is extraordinary for South Scottsdale. I'm pleased that there's this opportunity for local and small businesses to rent in a vibrant plaza and look forward to the additional restaurants and outdoor dining space. And like Ms. Sturgeon, I've been born, I was born and raised here in Scottsdale. And so I've seen the shopping centers go from the anchor of just a grocery store and some retail around it to what it is, when it, what it just basically just has shut down over time. Now we have an idea of housing and retail in the same place and a lot of people are against that. But the times have changed and I think we need to use the land efficiently. And by doing so, an underperform, underperforming retail center is not going to do that. So Green Belt 88 is that kind of development that I think works in this neighborhood and for South Scottsdale. So I'm asking everyone, please vote for Green Belt 88. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Zubia. Next of request to speak in person here is Mr. Brian Guerrero. Mr. Guerrero, you have three minutes to speak. Please state your name and address.
Thank you. I'm Brian Guerrero. I live at 3218 North 80th Place. And I'd like to talk about the community benefit aspect of this project because really this plot of land is designed to be a community benefit. Now the developer is saying the times are changing and the property needs to be updated to support itself. That they're asking for a multi-use development so the community aspects of the land can thrive and have longevity. That it needs residential in order to support this commercial use. That's a logical position to me. But for me, the problem starts where the words are not matching the actions. It's, it's about 93% residential and 7% community benefit. For me, that's not a multi-use project. That's a predominant use project.
Mr. Guerrero, I'm sorry to interrupt. Would you mind putting the microphone up a little bit? Thank you. It's a little better. Thank you.
This is not residential being used to support the stores, restaurants or other community use areas. It's a swindler trying to maximize profit from a certain area. That's what's happening here. The amount of residential that is being put here is not needed to support the small amount of commercial. It's being used to maximize the profit. To make up for this, the developers continuously pointed to the community benefit of a walkway that runs along the greenway. But this is really a walkway to nowhere. The biggest community benefit this walkway provides is the opportunity to dodge misplayed drives from the Continental Golf Course 10th hole. The one question I've had through this whole process is what would the project look like if there was a design that brought the percentage breakdown maybe to 75% residential to 25% commercial, even an 80/20 split? And something the developer said earlier was that just switching the percentages won't matter. But if you take down the amount of residential units, that changes the percentage as well. Why can't that be an option? Why can't we see what the project would look like with a more fair breakdown? I'm asking that this community or this committee continue the project to see what a design would look like that actually represents a benefit to the community. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Guerrero. Next, we have in person a request to speak from Ms. Margaret Creden. Ms. Creden, you have three minutes. Please state your first and last name and address.
Hi there. My name is Margaret Creden. I live at 2940 North 83rd Street, 85251. And I, I think what we're here about mostly is not that, or at least for myself, it's not that I'm against a mixed-use facility or apartment and retail at all. It's about the upzoning that's being asked here. It sets a precedence for future upzoning. And since 2015, we have completed, under construction and approved but not built, almost 8,000 apartments here. And we're at, we're asking to add more. I mean, is this all, is this the best we can do in Scottsdale? Is just keep adding apartments because we think people want to live here? I mean, I know people want to live here, but I think people want to get roots here. I don't think that they just want to keep having apartments. I just don't think it's, it's what Scottsdale has been about when I started, when I moved here 20 years ago. And the other thing for me is that this is really just all hypothetical because what we're seeing, which is a beautiful layout, architecture layout, lots of money's been spent on this. But this get, all get upzoned, approved, and then next thing you know, it's sold and flipped with a great upzone. And then what, what's, what we've been told here, everything that we've been told here can change because we allowed it, we allowed it in this city to, to set a new precedence for more density under, under our acreage that we're allowing on this land. So it's not that I don't want the apartments here. I do think it's a pretty nice looking project. But, but we've suggested going to just three stories and that was really, as a neighborhood group, that's, that's like the only thing we really asked for. Can we go to three stories? And Mr. Morris said, because I was at, at the meeting with him at his office, he said, well, we can't go to three stories because then we're going to do walk-ups. We're going to have to do, we're going to have to do staircases or we'll just do a storage unit, which was kind of a threat, I guess. I don't know. I don't know. But it's a beautiful piece of property. We don't need to put a storage unit on there, but, but we don't have to do walk-ups either because in Scottsdale, there are apartment complexes that are three stories that have elevators. So why can't this one have three stories? I know the Standard over by the Valley Ho, it has three stories and it's an upscale apartment complex. Why doesn't that pencil out? Why doesn't that work for the, the landowner or for whoever else wants to come along and buy that property? It's really important property for anybody, for any potential buyer. I mean, the landlord's going to make some good money on this no matter what. But, but really, we can't just, we just can't say, well, it looks really great. It's four stories and we're asking for three because we don't want to see this commission go and, and, and allow for our precedence to be set for higher density in this area. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Credon. Our last request to speak in person is Mr. Travis, I believe it says Junior. If you could please state your names also so that I don't mangle it again and, and your address. You have three minutes to speak.
Good evening, Chair Higgs. Members of the Commission, for the record, Travis Junior, 4013 North 83rd Street. It's a pleasure to speak to you in person this evening. I spoke during the last pre-public comment period on this project, and since that meeting, the debate has taken an even more bizarre turn. The opponents of this project have now appointed themselves the Neighborhood Leadership Team. I guess my wife and I missed the vote for the team. I've said clearly, the opponents of this project do not speak for me. Most importantly, the opponents of this project do not speak for the vast majority of residents who are business owners, professionals, parents raising families who are too busy to be here tonight. They entrust their elected leadership and by extension, you, the commissioners, on the dais this evening to ensure the city is well managed and to enhance the investment they made in the community. I'm sure if they were to know the stakes of this project, more would be here. We want to see a revitalized and vibrant redevelopment at the corner of Hayden and Osborne. The status quo is equally unacceptable and unrealistic. Green Belt 88 is an opportunity to set new standard for redevelopment in Scottsdale, and now is the time to get it right. This team has made numerous concessions and substantive changes to the project reflecting community input. I continue to be disappointed about the outright misrepresentations been made by the opponents of this project. It's time to turn a page on the loud vitriolic minority who has far too long influenced the course of this community. Yeah, excuse me one second. This is a proven local team with a track record of iconic projects. If this project with this team can't make it through the approval process, I'm concerned about the future of projects, the prospects for attracting the kind of project Scottsdale deserves. You know, we can point to many examples where the anti-height density crowd was right, and I agree with them. This case does not warrant their ire. This project and the team has earned your support, and I respectfully urge your approval of Green Belt 88. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Junior. That is all I have for blue cards for in-person speakers. Unless I'm missing any staff, are there any that didn't make it sway to me? No, okay, it looks like we're then going to move to the callers on the line. We have three speakers over the phone. Do we have Ms. Angela Underwood?
Yeah.
Hello, Ms. Underwood. If you could please state your name, address, you have three minutes to speak.
Okay, thank you. My name is Angie Underwood, and I work as a nurse in Scottsdale. I live near this project at 3500 North Hayden. And I'm calling in today to express my support for this project. I have heard a lot of false information spread about this project, especially on social media and from the Safeguard Scottsdale Group. This group does not speak on behalf of my family or my neighbors because we are really excited about this project. It's not the typical apartments project that we're familiar with. This is a true mixed-use project that will attract amazing retail and restaurant tenants. And as we all know, Scottsdale is a very unique city, and we all love it, love living here, but we demand more out of our development projects. And this project is one that delivers. There are three times more the required amount of open space. There's clear public benefits with the dedicated plaza and the walkway. The design looks fantastic. I love it. And there's housing shortage for working professionals like myself, and this is a project that helps solve that problem. And I just, I urge you to not miss this opportunity to develop an amazing project. We just, otherwise, we're stuck with a dying retail center. And I just, yeah, I just want to express my support for this project.
Thank you, Ms. Underwood. Next on the phone, do we have Mr. Jake Mathi or Mathi?
Can you hear me?
Yes, if you could please state your name and address, and you have three minutes to speak.
Yes, of course. My name is Jake Mathi, and I have lived in the vicinity of this property for years. I'm asking you guys today to please approve this amazing project. I really can't believe that it's even a debate. This is the exact reinvestment that the center needs, and I think it would become a perfect amenity for this neighborhood. My neighbors and I are most definitely thrilled about this proposal. I would also like to make this clear because it appears a group called Safeguard Scottsdale continues to say they know what, you know, quote unquote, "the community wants." As a member of this community, they do not speak for me or my neighbors. Our neighborhood does not have an HOA, and I've also seen some incredibly skewed and flawed information that they have distributed. Thank you so much for hearing me. Please make the right decision and approve this request tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Mathi. Next on the phone, we have Jason Alexander. Mr. Alexander, are you on the call?
Jason Alexander. Jason Alexander, you might have to star six to unmute, please. Jason, if you are speaking, we're unable to hear you. If you could star six to unmute. Hi, Jason. We're still having trouble hearing you. If you could star six to unmute.
Yep.
I just wanted to check to see if we are unable to hear you. If you could star six to unmute, please.
Finally. Hello, can you hear me now?
Yes, we can. We're just about to move on. Mr. Alexander, could you please?
Sorry about that delay.
Your name, address, and you have three minutes to speak.
Yes, hi, this is Jason Alexander, 9976 East Jasmine Drive. I'm an 11-year resident of Scottsdale. I recently sent the Commission a screenshot of a post by the group opposing Green Belt 88. And what I highlighted in that post was a quote where they claimed "total opposition to more apartments in the neighborhood." Let me read that again. "Total opposition to more apartments in the neighborhood. For two years, we have heard opponents say repeatedly that they don't oppose infill, they only oppose bad infill. The residents have driven nearly 20 improvements on this project, and they've been great improvements. The participation and collaboration has been terrific. It has gotten better in every way. Mr. Clough, Mr. Morris probably listed another half dozen improvements since the project was sent back for more community input." I was at the last community meeting along with most of the city council, and what we all saw was a room evenly mixed in support and opposition. We all heard the public benefits, and we also saw a few people who were just entrenched against apartments and frankly mistaken about the economics of infill. The project fact sheet submitted by the development team about retail shows that there will be a small net improvement in retail space versus what is there currently. It also shows that there will be upcoming losses in retail, and these calculations are very important. These are the facts of what is happening and what the retail changes would be. The opponents of the project are touting a push survey that in nearly a month of being distributed on friendly channels, received just a few hundred responses. No addresses, no duplicate checks, no captcha. And this was all being pushed out on friendly channels to people who wanted to share this message. They didn't allow any opposition. It basically said, "How do you feel about this?" So they're saying that 500 people clicking on an iPetition should decide for 250,000 residents of Scottsdale. If you look on the Facebook page, Scottsdale Living, which has about 20,000 followers, it is full every day of posts of people looking for one-bedroom apartments in Scottsdale. And these are not recovering addicts. These are not people down on their luck. These are new residents starting out or retiring. These are single parents. These are couples coming to start their lives here in Scottsdale or downsized, but their point is they are interested in being part of the Scottsdale community. Jan Brusich recently made a comment to the paper about apartments. You are not looking for people interested in investing in this area. That is wrong and insensitive. The same people who oppose some of these apartments are constantly saying, "Well, what about all the residents being priced out of the market?" Yet they are objecting to the very type of development that will solve this problem by increasing supply and lowering demand. Green Belt 88 deserves to pass. It has been heavily vetted by the process and greatly improved. The remaining opposition categorically rejects multifamily housing. Again, total opposition to more apartments in the neighborhood. This is us versus them nimbyism. It is not what was written into our general plan and supported by a 7-0 council vote. The neighborhood belongs to everybody, current residents, businesses, and future residents. I urge you to support this project. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Alexander. That is all we have for speaker requests, both on the phone and in person. So with that, we will move to the applicant to respond to any of the public comments.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Commissioners. This time, I will be brief. In terms of what we've heard today, I think it's important that the Commission hopefully heard what the development team heard, which was there is an opposition to redevelopment of this site. In fact, even some of those opposed talked about what their vision for apartments were. So both sides seem to believe that this should be redeveloped, that we should add the retail that we're trying to add. And trust me, from an ownership standpoint, commercial leases on a per-square-foot basis are much more lucrative than apartment units. So if there was an opportunity to add retail to this site, they would do every last square foot of it because it's in their best economic interest to do so. For that matter, if they had tenants who were anxious to go into this center as-is, the best, the least expensive, and the most efficient path forward would be to put those tenants in the existing center. They're not doing this because they enjoy going through, you know, a year, two years of an entitlement process. They're doing this because they're looking at a center that cannot survive as it stands. And on both sides of this debate, you've heard that multifamily and retail are appropriate. You've heard the opposition talk about three-story apartments. That isn't viable with what's being offered. We can't have, you, you can't take everything that is being offered with this plan and say, "It's great, just take a floor off," because they're two different types of development. You know what three-story walk-up development looks like because there is plenty of it. It was developed in the 80s and 90s, and some of it is still being developed today, but it is not the latest, it is not the greatest, and it is not the urban core redevelopment that this site deserves. This site deserves garage-parked, interior corridors, elevator-served, rather than three-story walk-up, which would be surface-parked. It would be less amenitized, and it wouldn't allow the public amenities that's being pursued here. There was a reference to the standard. I actually represent the developer of the standard, and I can tell you, that was a much smaller space, and it was designed to accompany the hotel and was allowed to use all of the amenities, including services from the hotel, which is why that project worked at that location. We don't have a resort hotel next to us here. Rather than address every item that was referenced today, what I will say is we've worked within the boundaries and the guidelines of what your general plan calls for in terms of mixed use. You've heard support from the community tonight for precisely the plan that we've brought forward. We're bringing this forward not in a manner that ignores the requests of the neighborhood and the community and those members that are opposed to it, but actually incorporates them to the extent that we can in order to have a project that reflects some of their concerns. We've talked about height, we've talked about density, we've talked about traffic, we've talked about design, and you know that the team in front of you, including the architect who lives in that neighborhood, has gone out of their way to design a project, develop a project, and bring forward a project that is something worthy of your support. I appreciate the time and the effort over these last two hearings, and I'd be happy to answer any questions. Would urge your support.
Thank you, Mr. Morris. I'm guessing we may have additional comments or questions from Commissioners, starting with Mr., excuse me, Commissioner Ortell.
Thank you. A few weeks ago, I had chatted with some of the people that, or at least one of the people that had opposed this, and I asked them at the time, "You have ideas about how this property could better be developed?" You know, and I asked, "Have you considered putting together a corporation to buy this, this property?" And the person said at that time, "No, they hadn't." But I don't want you to divulge anything confidential, but have you been approached by people that would rather develop the project, the property they're on way for purchase?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Ortell, no. There have been no offers.
If I could ask a question of staff. One of the, the commenters had said if the developer got this rezoning and made this agreement, they could flip the property and implied, or at least I inferred, that the agreement that underlay the revised zoning, that agreement would go away. Is that the case, Mr. Padilla?
If you're speaking about a development agreement, it hasn't been negotiated with, but generally, there's a provision in there that the benefits of the agreement run with the land and bind the, anyone who is a signor or successor to that land. So if you're asking just by transferring or sale of the property, does that terminate the development agreement? No, not necessarily. If there's a provision in there that it runs with the land and binds all successors.
And there would be a provision or that's an optional?
That's generally in there. That's a standard language in our development agreements.
Okay, thank you.
And Madam Chair, Commissioner Ortell, if I may, even without a development agreement, even if one didn't exist, I think there was a bigger concern that what was being shown in the site plan and what was being shown as open space, what was being shown as the Paseo, all of the, not only the benefits, but the design of the building could change by virtue of a land ownership change. And, and the Planning Commission is aware that that cannot happen because we are putting forward tonight, for your recommendation, a site plan that follows the zoning case, and that does not change without your action and the city council's action should it be approved.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Ortell. Any additional questions from, yes, from Commissioner Gonzalez?
Basically, I wanted to add maybe something or maybe understand a little bit more. Those development agreements usually are made, they're made with the, like was explained that the development can go forward as, as planned, as given by, by agreement. However, development plans do change, and they have changed. So in, in the- So in, in the answer to your question that you have, basically, there have been developments that have changed even greatly and some not so much. It's all about who develops the land and what's their purpose. Now, for this property to change, all it needs to do is somebody go forward, new owner to go forward and ask for a new development agreement. Am I correct or am I wrong?
Uh, Madam Chair, Commissioner Gonzalez, that's true of virtually every project in the city of Scottsdale. So, so yes, like any property can request a change and that change would require action by this commission and then the city council.
Okay, thank you. And I just wanted to get that squared
Yes.
you know, straight away so that we have an answer to that. The other part of it is, is that I, you know, I in particular, as far as myself, I like development. We look for development. We want development. We want new development. We like the, the area that you're talking about. I don't think there's a question about it needs to be redeveloped, repurposed or whatever you'd like to do. But the question is for everybody is how are we best going to meet the needs of not only just the people who live there, but of the city of Scottsdale? And I think that's the question we have tonight and that's what we are going to try and resolve tonight, I guess. Thank you.
Excellent.
Thank you. And I, I believe, Mr., why do I do that? Commissioner Ortell would like to follow up on that.
Answer to either one.
Could be worse.
On this commission, on this commission, the city council has selected experts and what I believe the mayor refers to as everyday people. Uh, I am one of those everyday people. Commissioner Gonzalez is one of those experts. Uh, so please bear with me because you said, if I, if I heard and recall correctly, you said that a new buyer of the project, of the, of the property could request a change in the development agreement. Is that request made to the, of the seller or is that request made to the city? Meaning that in order to get a change, it would have to come before a commission or the council or whatever. Which I just, you know, there are no stupid questions. There are only questions asked by stupid people. And I'm one of those. So if you could bring me up to speed on that, I appreciate it.
Well, I, I'm obviously not the person to ask, but let's ask uh, Mr. Curtis.
So, uh, Madam Chair and members of the commission, there's a couple of issues here, but for the most part, like pretty much all of your cases, um, the zoning is stipulated to a development plan. Uh, and there may be a development agreement that's also associated with that development plan. There may not be, but uh, there is a development plan here, uh, and that, like all zoning will run with the land, just like a development agreement. Um, but certainly at some point in the future, the current owner or future owner could come and go through the whole entitlement process again to make changes. But that would require planning commission and city council again. So, uh, if you're looking for some sort of confidence, uh, you have that with the development plan here, but it doesn't bind su- uh, future owners or councils from making changes, but it'd have to go through the, the planning and zoning process like it is now. I hope that helps. Thank you.
It does. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioner Graham.
Oh, thank you, Chair Higgs. Well, I just want to, first of all, I have a heart of gratitude for the number of people that have called in and for the number of people that are here. There, um, I was regretful to see that there were some aspersions cast on the community group, the neighborhood group. The applicant called them the neighborhood opposition and um, I think the architecture team has done a great job. They, they've been very communicative. They've, um, the spirited development team. And I think also that the neighborhood group deserves some credit and some attention because they've been, in my opinion, what I've observed, um, very respectful and um, very professional. They are here serving, volunteering. They're not here because anybody's paying them. They're here because they care about their neighborhood. They care about their community. They've banded together and um, I admire them. So there were some aspersions cast, but I'd like to sort of um, go the other way and say, uh, tip my hat to them. So I want to thank them for their time. I'm thankful for everybody here. Um, let's see, so quick question for staff. Uh, Mr. Curtis, we've talked about, we, we talk a lot about, about benefits versus costs for this project and for the city. And there's, I've seen out there in some of the content that this average density for this project, or let me, let me rephrase that, the average density for the area is about half that of this, what this project would be. Is that an accurate statement? Or maybe this question is for Mr. Clough.
Chair Higgs, Commissioner Graham, members of the commission. Um, most of the existing multifamily residential in the area is your garden style apartment that's been developed over the last twenty to thirty years or so. Uh, most of that was developed within uh, our R five multifamily district, uh, zoning district, which caps out at a twenty-three units an acre. Um, so I, I think average of those existing developments in this area would be around that twenty to twenty-three units an acre. Um, you know, some, obviously some of the more recent projects that have been approved are, are higher than that. Uh, I think the nearest one would be Gentry on the green that's up at Camelback. Uh, and that was approved uh, in the range of forty to forty-five units an acre there.
So if it's, if, if this project is double the dwelling units per acre, I mean, could somebody reasonably say that that could be characterized as out of char- or that could be defined or qualify as out of character for the area? That would probably Mr. Clough. And that's, that is somewhat of an abstraction. So if you could just indulge me.
Commissioner Graham, uh, certainly, um, the, you know, the character of the area is somewhat subjective. Um, if you, if you look at what's going on in the direct vicinity of it, uh, there's mainly commercial development surrounding the project uh, as well as a three story office that's directly abutting to the south. Uh, and then obviously you have a lot of open space in the area from the green belt. So, um, I mean, one might say based on the direct vicinity in the area, although some of the other densities may be average lower, um, a site like this might uh, be more adept to handle uh, higher units in a, in a smaller area than, than what we've seen average.
So we, so we're looking at a project that a lot of people are here to talk about and they care about. And they're saying, um, this is not in the character of the area. And the numbers say that it's twice what the area, what the area's character is. So maybe we can get past that somehow. And then we look at the, we, we look at the packet that we have before us and the, this kind of, I'm, I'm going to reiterate some of my questions from the previous meeting, but the deceleration lane and, and is, is, I asked, I guess, last time I asked Phil Kircher. I don't know if you have transportation staff standing by, Mr. Curtis?
Yes, Chair Higgs, Commissioner Graham, we do have Mr. Kircher uh, on the phone.
Oh, very good. I don't know if you can hear me. Are I can ask questions and into the ether before he replies?
Yeah, he, he will reply. Thank you.
I'm Madam Chair, Commissioner Graham. We also have our traffic uh, analyst also on the line if you have any questions.
Oh, thank you. Phil, can you hear me?
This is, Commissioner Graham, Chair, this is cannot be with the, with the traffic incident group.
So, um, um, this, since the last meeting, as far as we talked about some of those transportation items and again, we're talking about doubling the average uh, dwelling units per acre in the area. So has anything changed as far as those major components of, of transportation as far as not providing staff, SAF recommends X number of deceleration lanes for southbound traffic on Hayden. Have those been accommodated? Has anything been modified?
Uh, Commissioner, uh, Chair and Commissioner Graham, uh, we, the, the way.
Can I interrupt? The, the audio is not, I'm, I'm having trouble hearing through the audio. I don't want to be. Is it me? Did I, did I say something offensive?
Commissioner Graham, uh, can you hear me now?
Yes, a little, a little louder there. Thank you.
Okay. Um, overall, uh, when, when you compare with existing use on site to what's proposed, uh, there's overall reduction in number of trips. Uh, when, uh, with that said, uh, when we look at the traffic impact study that was submitted, uh, when, uh, we look at the number of right turn, right turns happening at these driveways, uh, when the number of trips exceed more than thirty peak car trips is when we ask for a right turn deceleration lane. And, uh, the two drivers where the chips are occurring, the, the number of trips exceed the thirty, thirty peak car trip. So we are, uh, asking, uh, for a right turn deceleration lane. The developer has agreed to provide a modified right turn deceleration lane at, uh, one of the access points and there is, uh, uh, a hype, uh, sixty-four KV, uh, high power trans- uh, uh, transmission line going along the property. So we ask for, uh, I think it's also stipulated that, that they need to ask, submit the cost numbers to see if, uh, if it's a possibility to relocate that pole to accommodate a right turn deceleration lane.
So that, that sound, that sounds like the issue remains unresolved. It's in discussion, under negotiation. Is that correct?
They are stipulated to provide those numbers. Uh, so uh, if, if the application is approved, they are required to, uh, do a right turn deceleration lane and or provide the numbers.
Okay. And one other thing, in the packet, there was a, there was, and this is actually, this might be somewhat of a non sequitur, but there was discussion about the exit only driveway to the north of Starbucks that is not on the land of the applicant. Why is that included in the packet?
Uh, uh, again, Chair and Commissioner Graham, uh, the site is working, uh, the developer is actually working, uh, with the Starbucks site, uh, in resolving some drainage issues. So it was more, it's more of, if there's a possibility to work with the Starbucks owner, we were asking if that driveway, it not being used effectively, if there was an option, uh, to eliminate the driveway.
So it was just sort of another abstraction. Okay. And then, um, last meeting, I asked, uh, Mr. Phil Kircher about the to the south of the Starbucks, the, the, uh, the two-way driveway. Because people are exiting the drive-through from that Starbucks and potentially impeding the, the incoming traffic, people that are turning in from Hayden. Have any changes from, um, from the last meeting for that particular driveway been presented?
No, they're not. Yeah, thank you.
Chair, Chair. Um, so if I can, oh, sorry. Is somebody speaking?
Yeah, this is Phil Kircher. I'm in the ether also.
Mr. Kircher, there you are.
Um, Karan did a great job answering, um, just to add on a little more to what he said. I think we talked about this last time. One of the difficulties of the redevelopment of the site is that they're not redeveloping the entire site. They have existing pads and, and driveways that serve those pads. And so, um, normally if, if we were starting from scratch, we would be getting these lanes at, at all the driveways and eliminating some of the driveways we don't think are in the right location. Um, it's, there's, it's not completely under their control to do that. So we do have stipulations that suggest they tried to accomplish that, but, um, they, they don't control some of the property that they would need to control in order to make those changes.
Okay. Mr. Kircher, sounds like we're, as a city, saying that the applicant should do some things, but not shall do some things. And so we're kind of just sort of passing it and hoping for the best. Is that right?
Yes, that's a good summary.
Okay. Well, um, studied this issue a lot. I really appreciate the participation. I, I've learned so much from my neighbors and from community members. This commission, um, looked at this project closely and the majority of it last meeting decided to continue it, hoping to get more, what we thought, I think, was collaborative, collaborative spirit or collaborative, a collaboration with the neighbors and, um, you know, they bumped the units down from two eighty-eight to two seventy-eight, three percent reduction. Still double the dwelling units per acre in the area. People say that's in character. People say, no, that's where it's going. Deal with it. But, um, it's, um, there are benefits for this project as well. I mean, the, the development team, uh, everybody's worked really hard for it and I appreciate everything that they've taught us and the patience that they've had with us. As a side note, uh, Mr. Morris, you use the, you use the term, I wrote this down and I think I missed the context of this content, but you said pending deal. Why, why did you use that phrase?
Uh, Madam Chair, Commissioner Graham, what context? I, I think I said there was no pending deal.
Okay. I, it's like I missed part of it. So that, that, so that, that there's not, that isn't an issue, right?
No, that, the part that you heard was referencing the fact that there is no pending deal. And, and I mentioned that because oftentimes these are part of development deals that are pending. They're in escrow. This is an example of something that the community is often asked for, which is a property owner looking ahead as to what is best for the property and how to maintain the property and what to do when a property is no longer successful, uh, rather than just sell it and walk away. Uh, I, I also, I just wanted to point out, because you've mentioned several times that it's doubled the density. I, I think what staff said is the most recent example of apartments is actually at this density or perhaps slightly higher. And what you were referring to are the older three story apartments in the neighborhood that definitely are in the twenties rather than in the thirties.
Oh, okay. Thank you, Mr. Morris. You're, you're, I appreciate that. And you've always been patient with, uh, our questions. So.
Thank you.
This is a, uh, this is a, um, a signature intersection and it's literally right on the green belt. It faces the green belt. So, you know, you could, it raises or begs the question, can something else be done to accommodate or maybe be a more of that historical character with such a marquee location, such a great, um, you can get a great view um, from, uh, from where you are and maybe you can change, uh, a- aspects of the project. So I want to thank everyone for coming tonight and thank the applicant and thank you, uh, thank you, Mr. Curtis and your associates for my questions. And Chair Higgs, thank you for allowing me to take the time to ask those questions.
Yes, thank you. Um, if I could just add on real quick, uh, Mr. Morris, um, can you remind us again of, I know there, what along the topic of conversation around traffic uh, and that intersection, can you remind us of what some of the, the benefits, um, additions to improving the flow or I know you touched on that, if you can remind us?
Uh, thank you. And I should have referenced that in my, in my rebuttal comments because traffic was raised. First and foremost, overall traffic will be reduced from what the existing zoning permits. So that, that's our starting point. But even with that, we've recognized that the sit, this is an older intersection and there are improvements needed. The city recognizes it's an opportunity to get those improvements made uh, at, at the cost of the developer rather than the cost of the city. So the city has asked us to look at, uh, deceleration lanes along Hayden, uh, which we have agreed to. There is one that cannot be entirely committed to because of the SRP pole. There's a SRP utility pole. It cannot be moved. Um, they've also asked that we've improved the signalization of the intersection by adding a, a protected left-hand turn. And we've agreed to do that as well. So not only are we in a sense, lowering the traffic from what could be allowed on the site, but we're also making improvements. So it will be a safer intersection and a better traffic movement. And if you recall the exhibit that I used, this has better access than any other site in which I've brought multifamily to you in the city. It is, it's very well accessed, but even beyond that, because there were questions, we're working with Starbucks to change their access patterns or to ask whether they would be willing to, uh, place a stop sign at the end of their, uh, drive-through. And we have limited access to our parking garage from the south side so that all of the traffic is coming in in one direction.
Okay, thank you. I think, um, I think I missed a few of those points the first time. So thank you. I knew there were some in there. Um, do we have additional questions and comments? Looks like we have something from Commissioner Scarborough.
Thank you, Chair Higgs. Uh, Mr. Morris, can you tell us what the square footage that exists?
Mr. Morris, can you tell us what the square footage that exists onsite today for commercial space?
I should, but there are so many numbers. Madam Chair, Commissioner Scarborough, I'm gonna call a friend.
Madam Chair and Commissioner Scarborough, I believe it's 60 to 65,000 square feet of retail right now. Is that correct? 65,148?
How much of that 65,000 square feet is the big boxes on that site?
Everything except for 25,000 square feet.
So approximately 40,000 of the 65,000?
That was the genesis for the number of what's being maintained on the site was maintaining the exact same number of shops and restaurants that is existing in this retail center today.
So from a high level perspective, what I'm hearing is that the owner would like to find a better use for the 40,000 square feet of functionally obsolete big box space to help support the 25,000 square feet of existing retail?
That is the exact motive behind this case, yes.
Perfect. I heard some comments in terms of how this structure will look around it surrounding uses. Mr. Morris, if you could just, for everybody's benefit, recap what is surrounding this project?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Scarborough, do you mean in terms of other uses?
Correct. Adjacent uses.
Thank you. Again, one of the most salient points on this land use case is the fact that unlike so many other cases that have been brought forward and have been controversial as a result of this, we are surrounded entirely by non-single-family uses. Meaning to our north are multifamily uses across Osborne. To our south are more commercial uses. On the east side is additional commercial use. There's also a church. And to the west is the green belt. The other side of the green belt is multifamily residential.
I appreciate that. And to the west, where the elevations are 48 feet in height, you have the golf course. And I believe somewhat of a water feature at the base of that in that vicinity. So the perspective of the development from the west is sort of subjective because for most people, they wouldn't be at the bottom of that floodway, looking up at that structure. Is that a fair understanding of the perspective?
Madam Chair, Commissioner, that's absolutely accurate. And I would give a lengthier answer, but Jeff has just run up here, which gives me the sense that he'd like to answer it. Excuse me.
Thank you, Chair Hicks and Commissioner Scarborough. We actually did do studies of the perspective of the building from across the green belt because in this area, you know, you have to cross over and the only public access where the public can actually be is on the west edge of the green belt. You cannot occupy the golf course unless you're illegally occupying it. Sometimes people walk their dogs in there after, after dark or whatever. But, but from someone who walks in the area, your vision of this project won't be from the base of the golf course because you're on the golf course. It will be from the public access trail and the multi-use trail that is on the western side, which is at the same height as the project. So that is, it is, it is even, eye level even with, with the finish floor of the project.
Thank you. I also heard a comment in terms of the walkway to nowhere. And I think if we all remember in the planning commission, I struggled with that as well. But Mr. Brand was very clear in the fact that this is potentially a gateway opportunity for that side of the green belt. And this is just going to be one segment for a potential future pathway that could be extended either south or to the north. I appreciate the applicant going back and making additional adjustments to the project based on feedback. If I look back at this project, I would say probably the outreach could have been improved to help sort of work with the citizenry. There's a lot of opposition and there seems to be a lot of polarization. I think Mrs. Sturgeon hit it square on the head. And I'm hoping that in future projects, we as the planning commission, the developer and citizens can all work more in a positive path of how do we all come to an agreement, find the middle ground? With that, I am relatively in support of this project. I believe that this is an appropriate use that aligns with the idea that the general plan wants mixed use here. You are providing both residential and commercial. I, in my opinion, I think looking at square footages of residential first commercial is one way to look at it. But I struggle with the fact that there are two different uses and the square footages are used differently. And I would feel, in my opinion, is that those, we're talking fruit, but we're talking apples versus oranges. It's just my opinion and I know that there, that's just simply my opinion. So I believe this does meet the intent of the general plan. I do see that you're asking for height and density. And I believe that the improvements that you've listed and what you've agreed to do in a development agreement, even though we can't force that, those are voluntary. I believe that this project is worth supporting. So that's all I have for right now. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. It looks like we have Commissioner Serena. You would like to add something?
Yeah, I know that we've, this question is probably going to be more for staff. I know that we've heard a lot from maybe supporter from the applicant. This is within the guidelines of the PUD. So first and foremost, it's a change of use. So it's currently as proposed, not within the guidelines of what it's using. They're asking for a change. And part of that process, if I'm correct, is to go through the city, through DRB, then through planning and up the council ultimately for the decision. So unpack the PUD, to be within the guidelines of the PUD, what is the maximum allowable number of apartments that somebody could put inside of a PUD? Per acre?
So Madam Chair and Commissioner Serena, currently there's no maximum density for a PUD.
So that, that number is subjective. So if someone were to say that they're at 48, 40 per acre, 20 per acre, or 100 per acre, that number is subjective and then it would have to have some sort of justification and that could come to DRB and planning. And if we voted on it and supported it and council did, then that would be within the guidelines of the PUD. Is that correct?
Madam Chair and Commissioner Serena, correct. In terms of, of a maximum, maximum doesn't exist. And the PUD was designed as a, years ago, as an incentive for property owners to do redevelopment of a mixed-use project consistent with the intention of implementing the general plan. And so there wasn't a cap on it and there isn't a cap on it. I think that flexibility was to maximize, I guess, the, the idea of being as creative as possible to again revitalize maybe some underperforming areas in Southern Scottsdale.
And it just so happened that this was passed right around the turn of the Great Recession, correct? And it seemed like there was maybe a focus to get something like this done to spur development when real estate prices were at a, you know, historic low. Is that correct?
Yes, members of the planning commission, I think that's a pretty good characterization.
Okay. And in addition to that, to stay within the guidelines, they're currently allowed 36, but asking for addition to 48. We can talk about the mechanicals and the screenings, but ultimately it's a 33% increase in the height of the building to be within the guidelines, correct?
Yeah, Chair members of the commission, Commissioner Serena, 48 is the maximum height with allowances for mechanical screening, which is more than what is currently allowed.
Right. So I mean, I agree that they are within the guidelines of the PUD and I wouldn't argue that. I would also agree that there's probably a better use for the property than what it is now. And I think maybe multifamily would have a component of that. So we link about this not only from just the seven acres, we try to think long-range planning, which we have to include as well as the short. Do we have an aerial map of the lot or the plat of the subject property? Is that easy to pull up? A general map will work too, if it's not inside of the packet, if we're able to pull up a map.
Yes, we could pull up the aerial. That was in the presentation.
Okay. And while they, while they do that, I mean, I understand retail, the way we see it in big boxes is disappearing. I also understand that, you know, we talk about housing needs and trying to fulfill those housing needs. But these things change, can change on a dime. And I think as a city, as a commission, as a council, when they make the decision, my thought is that we need to, we need to believe that we do what's right for our city, not in addition to the macro trend. So for example, if we talk about housing needs, I think you noticed, or if anybody's read, the two hottest markets in the country right now are Boise, Idaho and Bozeman, Montana. I would be pretty surprised if their planning commissions and cities were running into 40 acre or 40 unit per acre parcels to fulfill a housing need that's been developed because of COVID. So if I look here, okay, so let's take that in those plats. I mean, the property looks like maybe there's one, two, three, was it three properties before you get to Thomas that are similar in nature, correct? You have a, looks like an office building, another office building with a couple of housing units there on the end. And then you do have some condos there. So I guess in theory, if this is passed as a PUD at 280 units, 278, with called 40 units to the acre, you could see a run on those properties that are ripe for redevelopment all the way down to Thomas, could you not? And I'm just going off history of what we've seen on Scottsdale Road, correct? I mean, one passes and it's kind of marches away down to McDowell.
Madam Chair and Commissioner Serena, I think there are opportunities for redevelopment. When you get to those condos and then further south, there's condos, it's the northwest corner of Thomas. Those, because of the fractional ownership, may be more of a challenge for redeveloping. But certainly the office buildings may be underutilized currently and there probably is some potential.
So I think the challenge when we see a PUD, and we've seen this previously, is it is so subjective. So you know, my opinion compared to Commissioner Otels, compared to Commissioner Graham's, compared to the neighbors that live there, is something that puts the city in a position to have this kind of infighting. And to one of the speaker's comments, puts us kind of neighbor at neighbor. So then how do you come to decision, the way that I do it? I mean, I know that maybe there was a comment about our ability to use citizen input and if we should or should not. You know, at this point, we still allow citizens to speak in front of the planning commission, which would kind of show me that we should weigh that opinion. We still allow citizens to send in their comments. So I weigh that and I weigh it extensively. So when I looked at our packet, if you print it out, and I wouldn't encourage anybody to do this, especially since we're talking about green building and helping the environment, but it's 547 pages to date of this packet. And I'm sure it'll grow to maybe 700 by the time it gets to, to the council. Of that, 140 of it is the applicant, city report, what have you. The remaining of that 547, call it 440, is all citizen input of a 547-page packet. Now, I didn't go into what was previous to, I think, Friday, because they didn't break it down. I read through it when it came first to us. But since then, there's 100 pages of citizen input since the packet was submitted on Friday. Of that, 20% was in support, 80% was in opposition of the project. So I think there's been comment about the fact that, you know, that somebody made a comment online that this is totally, everybody's totally against this. I don't think anybody's, you know, silly enough to believe that kind of language. So then I went back because I was serving on planning commission previously and thought about projects that were this hairy, had this much citizen input, brought this level of emotion to the table. So the first one I went back to, to see the comments and how it shook. Because again, I would agree with the speaker that said, we need to come together as a community. And the first one I thought of, one of the first cases I saw was the Desert Discovery Center up in North Scottsdale. And I went back to that packet just for fun to compare. That was 156 pages total. 140 of those pages were citizen input. The majority of the planning commission didn't fully weigh the citizen input at the time. And people came up there and said, people have lives, the people that really support this have kids, like myself, and they're not participating in the process. Otherwise, you'd see huge amounts of support that'd be banging down the door. And when that ended up going to the citizens for a vote, 70% voted against it. Now, you could say that was right or wrong, but the general consensus of this, of this city was that they were against it. The next project of this size would be South Bridge Two, 10 acres, not too far away in the downtown. Another one that I could argue really tore this city apart by the time we were done with it. That was 291 pages of a packet. Of that, 60 pages were comments. Again, that thing sailed through planning and the comments were very similar. People are too busy. They're not here. They support it. And at the end of the day, 17,000 people signed a petition to send it to a referendum before it was finally pulled from the project. So there's a lot of subjective. We could talk about how much housing is needed, how many apartments are needed. I think frankly, you know, for every economist that's going to say, we need this to be 50 units an acre, I could find one that says we could do it at 30 or 25. But you know, the citizens are ultimately who, you know, these decisions are made for. And I would agree with the speaker that said, we need to bring this community together. And every time something like this, with this amount of input, has gone through planning and gone through the council, it's done nothing but tear apart the fabric of the community and rip neighborhoods apart. So for that reason, I see this as another example of what that could lead to. I've seen it happen. And because of that, you know, you had a community group that was neutral on the project when it came to us the first time. And this planning commission voted the majority to send the developer and the development team back to the community to try to find more support and make changes and work with them. And that community group, one of the oldest ones in town, actually went from a neutral position to a negative position, went the opposite way. So you know, that being said, I do want to try to help the fabric of the community. I think passing this and sending it forward in the way it is, is going to get the neighbors and create more civil wars in these neighborhoods. And at the end of the day, the citizens can really see what, what's right for Scottsdale. And I think, you know, I don't know about totally, but it looks to the majority of people in this community don't want this. So.
Thank you, Commissioner Gonzalez.
Thank you. I guess mainly what I wanted to ask Mr. Curtis is that, Mr. Curtis, the Continental Golf Course, which has a hole in front of the site, does Continental Golf Course own that property? I don't believe they do, but I wanted to get a clarification.
So Madam Chair and Commissioner Gonzalez, yeah, we just confirmed on the computer the ownership is Continental Golf Course.
Okay. But if you remember on the green belt further north, so was Monterey Golf Course, was one of the first golf courses up along the green belt. I think what, back in the sixties and stuff and things? They were the owners of their own golf course and part of the green belt and stuff? I guess my point is, is that things change. The green belt changes, the uses changes. It may not always be a golf course, may not always be privately owned or created for their own membership purposes. Eventually, the public uses that, that way, do you think? Is that probable?
Chair Hayes and Commissioner Gonzalez, I'm not sure I understand the question in terms of the permanence of the golf course.
Yes, as far as its usage, just as a golf course, could it ever go back into city hands? Or can the public use it as a thoroughfare or anything like that?
So I'm not sure what type of deed restrictions are on that property. Certainly, it's a flood control easement and area managed that way. So certainly uses will be limited. I think we can rely on that it'll be open space. And, and one of the general plan goals is with the Indian Ben Wash, which this is part of, is to try to embrace the wash and orient users toward the wash, which is part of what the proposal is accomplishing with the potential of doing that further south. So you'd always have, hopefully, public engagement with the wash regardless of what it's being used.
Very good. Thank you. I appreciate that. I guess mainly my, my reasoning is that because is that because of this development, it's not totally inclusive of the area. I value the opinions of what people say. They're either for it or against it for whatever reasons they have. But I put it on a lot of value on what public notice gives us. And I see the site, like the rest of the the Green Belt, as being an interchange of public usage, not just for golf memberships, but people walking down there, enjoyment, having purposes for the public, for public usage. That is probably why I really wanted to look at the massing and the density of the buildings. Because the the actual views that I see from the golf course and across the other side of the golf course and all the areas around it, the density and the height bother me as far as an architectural viewpoint. It's the massing to me is just too much, it's too big. And the other questions I have, and people have raised it here, is that, oh yeah, it it follows the zoning ordinance, it doesn't follow the zoning ordinance. There's a lot of go back and forth on it. But this is an upzoning case. That means it doesn't really confine itself to the ordinance that it's at right now. They're asking for an upzoning. That means a change of zoning, a change in the ordinance to be able to do this type type of project. I'm not prepared to do that change. And the reason why is just like I just explained it, I don't think it fits the public profile of the area. Now, I've given it a lot of consideration. I like the I like development of that area. It's very important. I do not want to set a precedent going up and down the Green Belt of having larger heights density projects being built along that way. I like the views. I want people to enjoy the views. I think people are here for the views. I think that's why people live here. So in 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 thinking this over and you know, I was hoping that the by giving the granting the continuance that the developer and the residents would be able to get some, you know, understanding and being able to work out some of the issues that they they have had a promise with. But I have not seen a change in the heights and I've not seen a a change in the density. You can shift that public uh the uh livable space around. I don't call that cantilever patios really livable space by definition by the uh by the uh assessor. That is not livable space. That is not livable square footage. So the numbers, I I just don't see where the numbers come from. But I understand they 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 gave me their explanations. I don't agree with them. But at this point, I cannot support this project as it is today.
Thank you. Uh any additional? Uh it's like Vice Chair Young.
Thank you, Chair Higgs. I guess first I want to ask a question. It's, has this development team earned the upzone? That that's why we're talking about this today. You know, and I'll I'll tell a quick story. I live in the area. I wouldn't say I live in the neighborhood, but I live in the area. I live in South Scottsdale. And I shop at Big Five, I shop at Office Max, I've eaten at Uncle Sal's. Just this last Saturday, I had to go buy some football shoes and some other gear for my son. And we went to a big box retailer at Scottsdale Fashion Square. They didn't have everything we needed. And I thought, hey, this is a perfect opportunity to go see what's going on at Big Five. So we I said, well, let's go down and we're going to get the rest of your stuff at Big Five because I wanted to see what it was like on a Saturday at one o'clock, when everybody's home from work, kids are home from school, and I would think that it'd be a busy, busy place. We were one of five people in that whole store. The parking lot was almost completely empty, except for those few people that were patrons of Big Five. And there was a few people that were there for Office Max. I also use Office Max because my office is in South Scottsdale. These big box retailers are having a hard time bringing people in. Everybody is buying stuff online. COVID has uh exasperated that. We're all buying stuff online. I think the neighbors are also buying stuff online. So I think for us to say, you know, yes, we would love to see these retailers continue to thrive. They're not. You know, density, height, um building massing has all been a a topic of discussion as as well as the amount of retail. Let's talk about the density. This this site is not a traditional site, the way that it's made up. I mean, you can look at it, it looks like, you know, a a comb with a bunch of teeth knocked out of it. So it doesn't have the traditional frontage that a normal project like this would have. So it doesn't get the benefit of calculating the right of way area towards the overall uh gross square footage of the property, which is used to calculate the density. You know, the the graphic that was put up there counting the 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 right of way areas as part of the gross square footage brought this down to, what was it, like thirty four, thirty four and change as far as what's density. So you know, there's there's, you know, the way that this property is, I think it's difficult to understand for everybody how this can be calculated as far as a density perspective, because it is not typical. The height. You know, the applicants asking for four story building. I look at what's around this and what's near it. And they had an exhibit up there about how far away um the building was going to be from the from the curb, the right of way or the road of Hay- of Hayden or Osborne. Well, I I kind of went even further than that. I said, I want to know how far away this is from the existing residents. So I measured it out. Seven hundred and twenty five feet to the closest house, single family residence. I drove those streets. You can't even see the existing building, let alone a four story building. There's a church on the corner of Osborne and Hayden that I would compare it to a three story building. I could barely see that. There's a two story apartment complex between this and the existing neighbors. There's a noisy car wash that's right there. There's um existing two story uh apartments to the north. There's an office building to the south. The apartments to the west, the saddleback, what is it called? Sand Pebble Village. Those are also seven hundred and twenty five plus feet away from this. So there's been a lot of discussion about what this is going to look like from the wash. You know, the the wash is always going to be there. It's an Army Corps of Engineers project. It's always going to be a drainage way. So we're talking about what's this going to look like from the golf course. The only way you're going to see it from the golf course is you're on that tenth hole teeing off. Most of the people that are, you know, going to be using this are are going to be on the other side of the wash, almost seven hundred feet away when they see this four story building that we keep talking about. Um, you know, the the people in South Scottsdale have, you know, I heard that the term uh apartment fatigue. Yeah, I think maybe they do, because there's a lot of them going up because we need it for the amount of people that are moving here. Would I like to see single family homeownership? Yes, who wouldn't? But this is a different type of a project. This is a mixed use project. I haven't seen too many other projects come through here that were single or multi-family residential that had this much uh commercial component to it that was integrated into the building. Plus, we've got these out parcels that have existing retail uh establishments that are are doing well. We got the Starbucks just renovated, I believe. So they're not planning on going anywhere. I'll tell you what, those those retailers are probably excited that they're going to have all these people there because they're going to stay. And to have this much, um I shouldn't swell, these additional units here, any retail that's going to go there is going to be successful. So if the neighbors want to have successful retail, they got to bring the 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 buyers in, the the patrons. So you know, th- there's been a lot of talk up here about, you know, that the neighbors don't, I've talked to the neighbors, and the neighbors are very passionate about it. I've also heard from people that were um, you know, for the project. And you know, Commissioner Serena, you know, had some statistics there about people who are for it or against it. Um, you know, I counted probably six or seven people for the project that came to speak today and three or four that were against it. There was a lot of people online. I have no idea where these people were online. I mean, they could have been anywhere. I mean, it's great to say that we've got hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of people in opposition, but I I don't know where they are. There's no addresses, no phone numbers. Who are they? So you know, there's been a lot of meetings. We've we've talked about this here once before. The applicant group has had meetings with the neighbors. And it's always been, we want this, we want this, we want this. And I think that's great. We want this to be a good fit for the neighborhood, for the for the city. And and I've got, you know, multiple emails here, one from one one neighbor that says, um, we're fine with four stories. And then others are saying, we don't want apartments at all. And these are all people in opposition to it. So I don't know what to believe. Um, as far as what the the overall majority of the neighborhood really wants, because it seems kind of mixed to me. Forgive me, I've got a lot of emails and a lot of notes here. The um result of a lot of these meetings was the neighbors asking for a lot of things. And you know, I asked the development team, Mr. Morris's office, to put together a laundry list of items for me of what's changed. I got fifteen items here. And you know, the neighbors have asked and asked and asked, and I see fifteen items here that says, agreed to. And I I could read them all if you'd like, but I mean, this is talking about all kinds of stuff about license agreements for the public sale. Um uh agreement to reduction of units down to two hundred and seventy eight. Uh agree to increase retail restaurant square footage, some existing shops to twenty five thousand square feet. Uh I mean, I can go on and on. On top of that, there was a discussion about the condo plot, which they're also saying this that they agree to. So you know, and now that the neighbors kind of didn't get everything that they wanted, they say, well, we we don't support it all. We don't want any, we don't want to talk about it anymore. So I don't know. I mean, I think in order to get some compromise, you got to stay at the table. And you know, I I just, I have a really hard time with this because, you know, we um we want to do what's right for the city. And you know, somebody said earlier that, you know, we've all been put up here based on our experience, and I think that based on what I'm seeing where this site is, what's around it, um it's it's the best use for this site. Um, it's keeping retail, it's keeping the restaurants, but it's bringing in a multi-family component, which is going to support all that. It's far enough away from existing neighbors that I don't even think you're going to see the project unless you're driving down Hayden or Osborne Road or sitting at the restaurant enjoying, you know, happy hour, which I'm sure a lot of the neighbors would probably also do. Because if Uncle Sal's comes back, they're all going to want to come back. So um you know, I, again, I I was, I I was having a hard time with this and and after evaluating all this and having all the discussions with the development team, um I I'm I'm in support of this project, and I think, um you know, I think that, you know, change can be good. I know a lot of people are afraid of change because, you know, if you've lived in this area for a long time, you get used to what you know. Um, you know, in in I live in South Scottsdale and I'm seeing it in my neighborhood also. I'm seeing, uh you know, a big project under construction right now in the corner of Sixty Fourth Street and McDowell. Some people don't like it. They're afraid of it. I'm excited because that was a a car dealership that sat just fallow for probably fifteen years. It was an eyesore. There's another property on Fifty Sixth and Thomas, which is just outside of the the Scottsdale boundary. It's been vacant. It's just been torn down for probably eight or ten years. And when projects start to sit fallow like that, big box retailers go away. I'd say we're seeing graffiti, we're seeing homeless people. We start to see a bad element come in there if it doesn't get developed correctly. And I think that this is a good development. You know, everybody keeps saying, what if, what if, what if, what if this gets flipped, what if this gets this? We've got a a applicant that has given us a concrete project that they want to build, and it's a good project. So you know, the the what ifs, yeah, th- there could be a change, but they're going to have to come back and do this whole process all over again. They can't just change midstream when this goes forward. If this goes forward through planning commission and council, they still got to come back through development review board. So there's this whole laundry list of items about landscaping, um you know, I mean, they have agreed to in in ups upgrading the material finishes of the building, so there's no EFS on the ground two floors. I mean, this is expensive construction. This is going to be a a great project that's going, I think, increase the property values of this area. So you know, I I probably talked too much here, but I've I've listened to a lot of people talk about things, so um I'll I'll yield to the chair and um that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Chair. Commissioner Urteil.
What a surprise, right? Well, one of the commentators tonight said that we should look at this and decide it based on the rules, the the laws, the the zoning. And that's not me. I I um I don't know the laws. I don't know that, but you know, we're talking about changing, so I don't know that I can stick to that. I look at what the uh what I have seen in the in the um there's what, six guiding principles uh that we are to use in evaluating proposals like this. But being a simple man, I can't juggle six guiding principles. I boil it down to three. First one is the aesthetics. What would the change look like? What would it look like in this setting? Well, it would be taller and prettier than the underperforming community shopping center there now. What's there now has nice landscaping and near empty stores. What is proposed would contribute more landscaping and add some vibrancy. And yes, it would add height. Compared to apartments uh down to the south a bit, this project would be ten feet higher, give or take, depending on who you're talking to. Now, the last time we discussed this, we were informed with what I guess is the booth theory of inverse relationship. Uh that is just a thirty three uh percent return on investment. That's a good thing. So a thirty three percent increase in height is a bad thing. Well, just as you don't need a degree in finance to know that thirty three percent ROI is a good thing. You don't need a psych uh a degree in psychiatry to know that that's nuts to think there's an actual real world relationship uh inverse relationship between ROI and building height. So yes, ten feet is higher, but in absolute terms, it's only incrementally so. Uh responding to the opposition, the applicant has reduced massing on the west side by eliminating the cantilevering over the public walk. But that's also reduced the visual interest of the building. I don't know if you recall the the profile that was flashed up on the screen, but the before and after, the before looked better. The after looks boxier. Okay, it's an accommodation to the opposition, so I understand why you do it, but it doesn't look as good. Um, it's, you know, it's just reduced the visual interest of the building. And again, you don't need a degree in finance to know that less interest is not a good thing. Even so, the proposal will look good in the community and appropriately fits the neighborhood character. So the second thing I look at is amenities. The proposal offers a shift in retail, dropping big boxes in favor of neighborhood day to day goods and services that would be more in accord with the planned neighborhood zoning instituted back in nineteen seventy four. It wanted day to day services, and that's what this would provide. Given the underutilization of the existing stores, it's clear that bringing in more relevant retail would be a plus uh for relevant resident friendly amenities. Speaking of residents, we need to be more friendly to residents, not just the no change cohort, but the people who want to be residents in Scottsdale, young adults leaving their parents, the hairdressers and firemen and teachers, the empty nesters who want something without maintenance obligations, people are moving to the valley from all over, and some of them want to live in Scottsdale. Brief story, I got a neighbor. He had a mother who started her adult life as a maid working for a family in Cincinnati, Ohio. And so she was a maid, she was poor, uh she was working for rich people, and she set a dream for herself. She wanted to live in Scottsdale. Um, that was her goal. Well, her son, who is a nationally known education consultant, you know, did well over time, and when his mother was ready to retire, he rented her an apartment in Scottsdale. And she got to uh to And she got to, to realize her vision. So we should not be saying, well, I got my place, you newcomers can go somewhere else. Now I'm going to annoy people, some people. Because when I hear talk of density, or tonight it was more about character. I, when I hear density, I hear efficient land use and concentration of people. But it seems I don't hear the dog whistle of density that's code for people not like us. People, one of the quotes was more transient with little investment. Like my neighbor's mother. She didn't have any investment here. These are other people. Now, I believe Scottsdale should have a guiding principle of being resident friendly to all people who are or can be members of the community. And cooperating to add more housing is a strategy for fulfilling that. And I got to say that I'm not suggesting that everyone in opposition of this is opposed to those other people. I've got to say, I met somebody tonight. He, we talked for maybe two minutes and I learned enough in 30 seconds to know he ain't one of those. From the intensity of an earlier experience, he ain't one of those. He can handle that. And I'm sure there are a lot of people here too. But, but I can't overlook, there is an undercurrent of, we don't want people like that here. Okay, moving right along. Third is economics. That's my last point. Is the owner going to get rich with this proposal? I certainly hope so. You know, it seems odd to say, we don't want people with little investment here. And then say, but we don't want people with large investments to make a good return on them. Because if the owner makes money, so will Scottsdale. Construction fees, property taxes, retail taxes, income taxes, gas taxes. Will it cost neighbors money? Well, would an increase in the housing supply mean less upward pressure on real estate prices? It's possible. Still, I would not want to limit one property owner for the sake of benefiting other property owners. Another aspect of economics, which is all about the distribution of resources, is traffic. Now, I was impressed with Mr. Levy. Mr. Levy, you and I are probably one of 10 people in the city of Scottsdale that ever looks at that manual. So, hey, we're, in one sense, we're brothers. We disagree on this project, but we are brothers when it comes to traffic stats. However, you looked at them, I looked at them and I came to a different conclusion. I don't disagree that, well, certainly the, the, the accident rate at the intersection is 0.72 per million cars or million miles, I forget, a million cars, I guess. And that does put us, put that intersection number 60 in the, in the city. But I also look at capacity of the, of Scotts, of, of, of Osborne and Hayden right there. It's under capacity. It can absorb more vehicles. Now, as for the intersection and the, the traffic accidents, you know, we've talked about they're going to add the left turn signals. That's got to have an impact. And that wasn't figured in, well, certainly to the 2018 stats. It's not figured into, you know, the, the traffic analysis done by both the city and by the, by the developer. Anyway, some people are concerned the apartment's going to add too much traffic. As we've heard tonight, it's actually going to decrease the amount of traffic compared to a functioning retail center. Now, I got to admit, that's a little bit of trickery, because a functioning resale, retail center ain't coming back. You know, it is what it is. So there's going to be some increase in traffic, but like I say, it's absorbable. The traffic study showed that it's at, at, I think it's five o'clock at night, out of one of those exits, it would take someone seven minutes to get out. And I look at that and I asked Mr. Kircher, the, the transportation, is he the transportation director or traffic planning? He is the expert, he is the guru. And, you know, I look at that and I say, is anybody going to sit there for seven minutes? And he says, no, they're going to take a different exit. Or they're going to make a right turn instead of the left turn. Because that seven minutes was to make a left turn, get out of there. I wouldn't wait seven minutes. I would go around the block. I'd make a loop. I'd, I'd exit on Osborne. So if you run the formulas, yes, it's going to be seven minutes. If you run real life, it's not going to be seven minutes. Okay, I've lost my place and you're probably bored with this anyway. So I'll just say, this proposal is not a no brainer. None of us would have think of it that way. Rush hour traffic does concern me a little bit, but I think it's manageable. It's been explained to me how drivers would cope. But I realized rush hour traffic will be an issue even without this build. It's not like if you don't build it, there's not going to be more traffic. There's going to be more traffic. Now, to me, the amenities and the aesthetics are pluses. And the accommodation of prospective Scottsdale residents, that's huge for me. I'm convinced this is a proposal that we should recommend. Thank you.
Thank you. What was it? Commissioner Serena?
Yeah, I don't have anything else about the project. But the last thing I want to say is, you know, shame on us here. We've got citizens that submitted 500 pages of comments. And we sit up here and question, maybe they don't live in the neighborhood, when 90% of them have given their addresses. You have to give your address 90% of the time unless you just email the, the planning commission. So we question where they live. And then in the same breath, where we accuse them of maybe not like us and insinuate some sort of underlying racism or feeling of, you name it, fill in the, fill in the feeling behind it and attack them for having an opinion about somebody that's not like them. Meanwhile, we're doing that to them. If I had a dollar for every time I've been on this commission where I've gotten a comment from a development attorney, someone that supports the development or the developer that bashes the neighborhood or bashes the people in it as not being smart enough, not understanding, maybe just not getting it, because we know better. So if the commission up here wants to do our part in trying to build the community better, as one of the speakers said, we can attack the project, we can have our different opinions of what the project looks like, because it's subjective. But when we start picking out one or two comments and painting a broad brush over a community that submitted 600 inputs, we need to do better. Because the council appointed us, a majority appointed each one of us to be leaders in this community. And leaders in the community don't pick out a few, a few items and give addresses and say, well, you know, I don't even know where this person lives. Or, you know what? I read a comment that said they're not like us, therefore the neighborhood is probably, you know, a bunch of bigots and racists or just don't want young people. So I don't have any questions. My thoughts about the project are there. But, you know, I want to apologize for anybody that felt offended, because maybe they didn't live close enough to the project, so your tax dollar inputs don't count. Or maybe you put a comment on paper and it's being misrepresented as you being something that you're not and trying to push out a demographic that just isn't the case. So I apologize.
Commissioner Ortell.
Actually, my colleague here makes a good point that, you know, some of these people don't live close by. And I was impressed that this, Ms. Vukic, I'm going to blow that too. Jan, if I can call you Jan. She lives, she says she lives two miles away. And I think that's impressive. Short story, on another project, there was a equine center out in, pushing towards Fountain Hills on that end of, of Scottsdale. And I had a friend, have a friend that lives in that general vicinity. And I asked him, I emailed, I says, does that bother you? He says, no, that doesn't bother me at all. Couple of weeks after it passed the planning commission, before it was going to go to city council, he calls me and says, there's an equine center going in here. And I said, yeah, I asked you about that. And I, and you said you were okay with that? And he says, I didn't realize I was so close to it. Well, Jim. You know, and that's why I applaud Jan. You know, she's not right next door and that's okay. She is here. You know, and, or speaking on the phone, you know, to give input. And I appreciate that. And, you know, I think there was a mischaracterization or maybe I didn't say it well. I'm not saying that everybody in opposition doesn't want other people here. I certainly never used the word racism. You know, other, yes. Implied poor, yeah. I think that's part of it. But at any rate, like I say, I'm sure I've offended people. Hey, that's okay. People offend me too. Life goes on. Thank you.
Commissioner Graham.
I also want to apologize. I want to say that you are not the cartoon that they are trying to portray you as. This is, you, the people that live in the area, if they don't get a say, I don't know who does get a say. If you feel like we've come across as we know better than that, for that, I also apologize for. Your opinions matter and the public outreach was real. And the, as what they were described, the opposition, the neighbors that worked tirelessly, unpaid, volunteer, because they care about their neighborhood, are very respectable. So I, I want to say that on behalf of the commission. Thank you. Thank you Chair Higgs.
Vice Chair Young.
Thank you Chair Higgs. I want to thank Chairman or Commissioner Serena for his comments, because I think part of that was directed towards the comment that I made. And I was, I should have been more clear. There was a, a poll that was sent out, that was generally an anonymous poll, that was sent out through social media and other means. That's what I was speaking of specifically. You are correct that when you submit a comment through the city, you put your name, your address, and sometimes your phone number. So, you know, that is recognized. And I apologize that I wasn't clear when I made that statement. But I was speaking specifically to that poll that was given out anonymously. And that poll had some results that I wasn't so convinced with, because I don't know where that poll came from. That was, those were anonymous numbers. So that was, that's my clarification. I appreciate you bringing that up. Thank you.
Commissioner Scarborough.
If there's no other comments, I'd like to make a motion.
Okay.
Seeing none, I move to make a recommendation to city council for approval of case 15Z in 2020 for the staff recommended stipulations after determining that the PUD criteria have been met and the proposed zoning district map amendment, development plan and amended development standards are consistent and conform with the adopted general plan.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Commissioner Ortell. Can we get a roll call vote, please?
Chair Higgs?
Yes.
Vice Chair Young?
Yes.
Commissioner Scarborough?
Yes.
Commissioner Gonzalez?
No.
Commissioner Ortell?
Yes.
Commissioner Serena?
No.
And Commissioner Graham?
No.
Motion passes.
Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. And thank you to everyone, as, as other commissioners have said, for the time that's been dedicated for those for and against. It's really appreciated. It's important that we have this feedback. So, thank you. Do we have anything else, Mr. Curtis, that we need to discuss this evening or cover?
No, Madam Chair, thank you.
Very good. This concludes our meeting for the evening. I'll ask for a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
So moved?
Second.
A second? Thank you. That, uh, motion passes, we're adjourned.
Thank you Chair.
Can I just do that? Can I do that?